It's like you're doing something.
We'll call the meeting to order. Wycomico County, the Council Legislative Session 2025-10 for May 20, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done as it is in heaven. And give us as day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Consent to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion from the council to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Consent agenda passes unanimously. At this time, we have a couple of proclamations. The first proclamation is declaring Wycomico County a stroke smart county. I think we have Chris Hall. Where are you? There he is. And Vice President Jeff Merritt's going to read the proclamation.
As soon as I have it, I'd be glad to do it.
Oh, do I leave it back here?
Talk amongst yourselves.
Can I talk about the importance of this?
In a minute. Are you going to steal his thunder? Go get the proclamation.
All right, we just printed.
Thank you.
Can I see this? Oh, yes, I can read this. He's scaring me.
Good morning, everybody. I'm very proud to present this proclamation on behalf of Wycomico County Council. We are a stroke smart county, whereas one in six people will have a stroke in their lifetime, and eighty percent of families are affected. Leading cause of long-term disability, putting a tremendous financial burden on individuals and families, as well as society. And whereas Maryland public and private schools are encouraged to make stroke smart stop a stroke, save a life part of their training for all students and faculty. And whereas all Maryland health and safety-focused entities will be urged to participate in improving mental health literacy by educating volunteers and volunteers, and whereas Maryland businesses, civic organizations, senior communities, faith-based organizations will be encouraged to participate and contribute to the stroke smart stop a stroke, save a life campaign through active citizenship efforts. And whereas the goal to educate everyone in the state of Maryland about stroke recognition and the importance of dialing 911 immediately, therefore using the onset of stroke, and to make Maryland a model for other communities, citizens, counties, commonwealths, and states, as well as the nation, thereby advancing the vision of the stroke smart. Now, therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims Wycomico County as a stroke smart county, and calls upon all citizens to observe this designation done this twentieth day of May 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council.
Very much.
Thank you for being here, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Just want to say good morning. My name is Dr. Trudy Hall. I'm the chief medical officer for Title Health. And this is so important that we educate our community on the signs and symptoms of stroke, as well as making sure that they get life-saving care. My father had eight strokes, and I had to deal with the disability, and I know the effects of the stroke. And I'm also a rehab physician. Through my training, I completed. This is the first step in getting our counties here on the lower shore to do this education. So thank you very much for the support.
Next proclamation we have is to recognize Children's Mental Health Matters Week. Karen Hughes and Meg Cohen, representatives of Life Crisis, are here. Councilwoman Shanice Shields is going to read the proclamation.
I should give this proclamation to Children's Mental Health Matters Week. Whereas mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter. And whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health disorders among children provides better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to services and support, and also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas it is important that families and communities learn about the warning signs of mental health disorders, and were to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. Now, therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week beginning May 4, 2025, as Children's Mental Health Matters Week, and call upon all citizens to observe this week in an effort to raise awareness of children's mental health, done this twentieth day of May 2025, and is signed by all the council members.
Congratulations. She's going to take a picture. Oh, sure. I can't see. Sure.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Life Crisis Center, we would like to thank you all for the priority that this county places on mental health. And these proclamations that you give us really help break the stigma in terms of mental health and seeking mental health assistance, especially for children. And at Life Crisis Center, we offer a 24-hour hotline. We also offer therapy services to any youth or adults who have experienced abuse. And so again, we would just like to say thank you so very much for helping us and helping our vision come to pass. Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have several public hearings on the agenda this morning. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper for each one of the hearings. We are going to shuffle the sequence of the hearings slightly. The first public hearing will be moved to number four, and then the rest will be bumped up. So we're starting with Resolution Number 60-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year 2025 capital budget to authorize transfers of funds for the Old Courthouse project. This is basically to complete Phase Two of the window replacement project for the courthouse. And we have Mr. Peyton Matthews here, General Services Supervisor, and Ms. Lori Carter, Grand Administrator, if you have any questions.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 60-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come into the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Some of these questions may have already been answered, and I'm just not aware of them, so if they have been, I apologize for the redundancy. The transfer of this fund balance, my question is, does this complete this, the $800,000? Is that a set price, or will this be like some of the other things that the county gets involved in where the council appropriates an amount of money and then later has to appropriate more to get the budget updated? So my only concern is this a bid price, and will this take care of the problem and be finished with it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments for Resolution 60-2025. Entertaining motion from the council to approve Resolution 60-2025. Second? Motion second. Discussion?
Can we get Peyton just to give us a brief? Thanks, Peyton.
I didn't see that.
Good morning.
Hi, how you doing?
You can state your names.
Peyton Matthews, General Services Supervisor.
Lori Carter, Grant Administrator.
Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Do you mind just giving us, just tell us, so the public's aware of what's going on with it?
Yeah, we have undertaken three major projects, getting ready to undertake the fourth at what we call the Old Courthouse. We completely replaced the HVAC system, completely replaced the electrical system, and I mean completely.
That's good.
We have done probably fifty percent of the windows, maybe a little better than that. And the next major project we're going to do is painting, which we are working on getting bids for now. This money, when I budgeted for the electrical system and for the HVAC system, I went in heavy, not knowing what we were going to end up with in either one of these systems. We had a ballpark figure on the HVAC. We were pretty close to that, but I was real heavy on the electrical work. That's why we have this balance in that project fund. And rather than start a new project, we'd like, I'd like to continue the window replacement as Phase Two, using the funds left over from the previous two projects.
Okay.
This has not been out to bid yet, but I'm pretty comfortable that this amount of money will cover the balance of the windows. I don't know if you've noticed, but the east facade and the south facade have already been done, and you can't tell they're not the original windows. You would never know.
I had the question of, since this is an older building, did you have to follow the Maryland Historical Trust or the county trust, the type of windows?
Yes, ma'am. We had to present them to the Historic Commission. They were approved. It's just normal procedure for anything we do on this, on that building. And we did, between the energy efficiency of the windows and the energy efficiency of the new HVAC system, we did receive a $56,000 rebate from Delmarva Power.
Oh, great, great. Does that go back to the general fund, or does that go into the next project?
Goes into the general fund.
General fund, okay. Well, that's, that's great. That's great.
Got a couple. When it says this is transferred, is it within your budget, or transferred from general fund to?
Nope. It's transferring from projects that had excess funds in them. And so, again, it was all, we attempted to budget the projects as discrete projects. And as such, as Peyton was saying, we tried to avoid having to come back to you for more money for those discrete projects, while those projects are close to being finished, and as such, there's sufficient funds left over to take on this next task associated with the Old Courthouse without using any additional funds, appropriating any additional funds from the general fund.
Thank you. Isn't there a grant involved in this?
So, to that question, I am in the process of applying for funding through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And under their fiscal year 26 state program, there is a grant application that will be due on July the 2nd. So that's when I will be submitting in for an application for those particular funds to try to get some of those back.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's always a great thing, when you look at a government budget, you find out that we've saved money on a project. Instead of spending money on a project, we've actually saved money. What I don't understand, I know there's been some minimal explanations of it, but the only thing that struck me on this was the fact that we're three-quarters of a million dollars, we were three-quarters of a million dollars over budget. So I sometimes wonder as to when projects come before the council, when we approve these projects, how do we really know realistically what we're, what we're trying to gauge here?
Well, as Peyton said, he specifically stated that this, we only budgeted to do a portion of the windows. We now want to do the rest of the windows. So using savings from other projects lets us continue to do the rest of the project. And we have these savings because until we actually opened up the walls and started replacing the electrical system, you don't know exactly what you're going to find. And so, yes, we come to council with, and this is globally for capital projects, we come to council with estimates, our best estimates as to what it's going to cost to do projects. And sometimes they run short, and sometimes we're lucky enough to have savings to be able to tackle the next phase of something that we thought might have to come out of the general fund. When we've already appropriated these out of the general fund, this allows us to utilize those funds and not take another hit out of the general fund.
I imagine that's your concern.
Yeah.
We had an engineer develop plans and evaluate the building, and my budget for that electrical project was based on the information the engineer provided, and just general conversation that I had with the engineer concerning what the cost could be. And again, as Pam said, I'd rather sit here and ask you to reappropriate money than sit here and ask you for more because I was wrong.
Right, and I understand that, Peyton. I, believe me, I have a lot of respect for what you do and what you have done for many of the years here. The only thing that comes to light here is, you know, reading asks to do a $7.2 million project on transferring soils from one site to another site, and we're saying $7.2 million. Do you realize how bad of a miscalculation had to have occurred for us to be spending $7.2 million? So I really wonder, I mean, it's going both ways here, is I just hoping that there'd be some type of consistency that when budgets come before this council, and budgets period, whether it's come before the council or the public as a whole, that something be somewhere within some, some iota of a realistic number, in some sense of the means. The $300,000 on an HVAC unit, did we like not put in as many HVAC units as we thought we were going to have to do?
That would, no, the whole building was done with one system.
Okay.
We've eliminated all the window air conditioners. Along with the window air conditioners, with the electrical wiring that went with them. The HVAC was based on an estimate from our contractor. The equipment came in under what he had estimated. That's why there was a significant difference.
Okay. Joe?
Peyton, the last time I was at the old courthouse up in the jail on the third floor, let me rephrase that. I was on jury duty or something, and we were over there, and we went, that was basically being used as storage. Is anything?
That's leaving.
Pardon me?
That is leaving.
So what's going to be done there?
To my knowledge, there are no definite plans for that floor right now, but that is under the jurisdiction of the court. But basically, it was a catch-all for 20, 30, 40 years.
Correct, yeah.
And.
Looked like a far-hazard, really.
Could be, but we are slowly but surely getting it cleaned up.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that you guys, you did a good job if you over-budgeted, and you didn't have to come back to us for more money, and you were able to reallocate that to another project. I just want to say thank you for, for giving us good news instead of saying, hey, sorry, I got to ask for more money. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 60-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thanks, Peyton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the public hearing on Resolution Number 61-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year 2025 operating and capital budget to facilitate bidding to allow time for a Federal Aviation Administration construction grant at the Salisbury Ocean City Wycomico Regional Airport. This is a request to add a project to the 2025 capital budget for the airport for $100,000 to be funded by $95,000 FAA grant and $5,000 local match to rehabilitate runway 32, 1,200 feet, and the funding will cover the cost of the design work. You have Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, if you have any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 61-2025. To move? Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 20?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, public hearing, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 61-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come into the podium, please state your name, your concerns, and your county of residence. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 61-2025. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 61-2025. To move? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, the next, the next one is a public hearing on Resolution Number 62-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year 2025 operating and capital budget to distribute remaining funds to our partners from the Wycomico County Narcotics Task Force in the amount of $450,000, and the purchase of new radios for the state's attorney's office in the amount of $42,000. Again, this request is to amend the 2025 capital budget for the state's attorney's office by $42,000, pay-go funding for the purchase of radios, and to request for the allocation of the remaining Narcotics Task Force funds to be distributed to the Maryland State Police, Salisbury Police Department, and the Fruitland Police Department.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 62-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 62-2025. Entertaining motion from council to approve the Resolution 62-2025. To move? Second?
Second.
And discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 62-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the public hearing on Resolution Number 59-2025. This is to authorize the county executive to execute a lease agreement with Azure Flight Support, SBY LLC, for a fixed base operation. This is a request to enter into a lease and operating agreement with Azure Flight Support, SBY LLC, who is the LEC, in which Azure will lease specific parcels of land, commonly referred to as the GA terminal, the fuel storage facility, the maintenance hangar, the RF hangar, each located on the southwest portion of the airport, and the improvements thereon, including the use of the apron and the vehicle parking area. The term of the lease will be for a period of 20 years, commencing July 1, 2025, and expiring on June 30, 2045, with the option to renew for additional 10 years until June 30, 2055. The annual rent for the fuel farm shall be $51,153.59 for years 1 through 5, $102,307.18 for years 6 through 10. The annual rent for years 11 and beyond is to be determined. Ground rent shall be 36 cents per square foot for the aeronautical unimprovement land. LEC is to pay the county 90% of landing fees, a fuel flowage fee of 14 cents per gallon for all fuel sold for all aircraft, and a usage fee of .08 per gallon for all fuel dispensed for all aircraft. LEC will also pay to the county parking fees equivalent to 50% of revenues collected for use of the apron area for any aircraft to park temporarily or overnight, and will pay to the county 1% of LEC's gross revenues attributable to all sales of products and services rendered by LEC at the airport. The initial tenant improvements will be completed in phases, subject to FAA and county approval as provided in the lease agreement. And we have Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, if you have any questions.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 59-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Any comments?
Just come right on up to the, yep.
Morning.
Name is Clarence Barrett, and I've been in the aircraft maintenance business for over 70 years. I'm 90 years old now, and I've worked around here, all the airports, Chrisfield, down to Virginia, over to Easton, Cambridge, up in Delaware. I'm an FAA-certified mechanic. And what's happened, a lot of these airports, they get the idea they want to go to these corporate-type jets, and they think they can organize everything to set it for those people. They forget about general aviation, and general aviation actually is what the FAA looks at, basically, because they look at the total aircraft movements, which is landing and take off. That's how they rate the airports in priority. And your grant you get and all that is predicated on that, that idea. And I really feel that general aviation, like Salisbury, without the local people like me, I worked at Wellup Island, but also worked for myself on the side, doing aircraft inspections and maintenance. And I worked on airplanes at Salisbury for a good 40 years. Retired in 95, I continued to do that. And general aviation has never had much say what was going on around there. They predicated everything on the airlines and sponsored aircraft. And I feel right now that they're bringing in a new FBO, and I don't know what he's going to be like, nobody knows for sure, but I'm worried that they're going to move in, and his prices on everything, and I really feel we need to look into this. I don't represent any other people here. I've got enough business in other airports. I mean, I work all over the place, and I only do it to help the cows because I don't need the money, per se, but I enjoy doing something. Certain amount of self-esteem. You work your whole life, it's hard to just quit. And I really feel there's quite a few people out there that are concerned about this new FBO moving in, and the. FBO moving in and the contract, they're not quite sure on it. And I'm only here representing the other people. They asked, they wanted to delay this vote until they have a better chance to look at what's going on, because they got rid of a lot of the hangars out there. The previous airport manager was here, decided to do that, I guess, and a lot of people that have airplanes do not, they're not wealthy like a lot of people think they are, and they can continue to fly. As a different community of aviators, I don't even know this, but DNA, I think, of people who fly and all, they're a whole separate group of people. And you go back and look at, like, World War II, had it not been for those particular people that got into aviation on their own, with the government being involved at all, we would have really been hurting at the start of World War II, because people like Jimmy Doolittle, Billy Mitchell, those people, they're way ahead of what the government was. Had not been for those people's knowledge of self-taught knowledge, we would have really been hurting at the beginning. I mean, there's a whole group of people today that are in that field, and we have a lot of young people getting into aviation. I just recently flew all the way to Wyoming with a young 22-year-old girl who was an instructor pilot out of Bayland Aviation. But it's a career field that has a lot to offer to young people, and I think we need to do all we can to help general aviation.
Appreciate you coming in. Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments for Resolution 59-2025. Entertaining motion from counsel to approve Resolution 59-2025?
To move.
Second?
Aye.
Discussion. Mr. Rudy, thank you.
Good morning. Tony Rudy, Airport Director.
Morning. Thanks for being here.
So I just wanted to clarify one thing first. The previous speaker mentioned that FAA looks at landings and takeoffs as a rating for airports for grant funds. That's actually incorrect. It's, airports are rated by passenger and planements, which are typically from the airline. So just to clarify that point. Very briefly, this, the process we went through for selecting an FBO started about a year ago, or actually, a little more than a year ago, where we advertised for input from either the public or the industry with a request for information. We had a lot of good dialogue with companies across the country, and also some local, more local FBOs, to really figure out what kind of business would fit this airport and what kind of business could be supported here. So we had a lot of good input from that, and we took that into consideration. One of the things we, we did focus on was our local population at the airport, and we wanted to make sure that they were treated fairly and could be given discounts for services at the airport. So when we, when we developed the RFP, we took, we took all that information into consideration, and we put that out there for proposals. We did receive two, what we thought were very good proposals. The, the one from Azure was actually above and beyond. It met all the, met all the requirements that we had in the RFP. And if you, if you had a chance to look through their lease and operating agreement, one of the sections refers to service standards in which that, the less E in this case, Azure, agrees to charge reasonable fees and not unjustly discriminate against anyone. And they also have the option for price discounts for various classes of users, which they did indicate that they would, they would be looking at for our, for our local users there. They're going to provide a first-class facility. They already are in business doing that at another airport. And for things like fuel, they're going to take the regional, I guess they're going to look at the regional average of, of prices for fuel and also charge accordingly, and they'll be reporting all their rates and, and charges and fees back to the airport so we can examine that.
Any questions from Mr. Rudy?
So, I guess what this lease says, that if you own a private plane at the airport, you cannot have anybody else other than this company work on your plane, correct?
No, that's not what the lease says.
So they can hire an outside mechanic to come in and work on their plane?
So anyone in the airport has a document called minimum standard, which airports around the country do. The FAA encourage airports to do this. And what it does is make kind of a level playing field for everyone operating on the airport. So someone like Azure comes in, they're, they're operating, or they're, they're going to be operating a bunch of different businesses. They're going to be selling fuel, maintaining airplanes, doing flight training, and, and other activities. If someone wants to come in at the airport and do what we call a specialized aviation service, such as just aircraft maintenance, we will allow that, but there are certain guidelines that they have to follow. They have to provide a hangar of certain square footage, they have to provide proper office space, restrooms for customers, hours of operations, and things like that. So it makes, it makes a level playing field for a business to come in rather than someone just operating, say, out of the back of their truck, providing a service, and the airport doesn't benefit from it.
So if a private contractor, mechanic, I'll give you an example. I was over to the airport, it's been a few years ago, Captain Willie was flying the helicopter, and a guy come along in a truck, got out of his truck and went in and worked on the helicopter. He was, I guess, a licensed helicopter mechanic, and did the repairs. I was sitting there talking to Captain Willie and, and left. So what happens if there's a airplane there that this company does not have anybody that's qualified to work on a specialty project? Does that mean before whoever owns that aircraft or whoever's working on it has to have a hangar and a bathroom and an office before that airplane can get repaired? As an example, a plane flies in there with a specialized problem, say it's a new plane, nobody's trained on it yet locally, what happens in that situation?
Are you talking a, a private aircraft or...
It doesn't matter. I mean, any kind of aircraft that come...
There's differences there, but for the sake of argument, so if a plane were to come in, have an issue, typically, we would point them in the direction of our mechanic. If the mechanic could not handle the situation, then obviously, we'd want the aircraft to be able to get out of the airport and get on its way, so we would make other arrangements. And this has usually happened in the past with, say, corporate aircraft, where they fly in their, their own mechanics to be able to fix the airplane to leave. So we can't, we can't deny anyone using their own employees to work on their own aircraft, but if it's private aircraft, the owner or operator can do certain things on the airport.
So going back to, if it's a corporate aircraft and they have to fly in a mechanic, do they have to supply their own hangar and their own bathroom and their own office?
No, because they're, they're not doing this as a business. They're doing this to fix their airplane to...
Well, they're a business.
I'm sorry?
They're a business.
But they're working on their own aircraft. So FAA makes a distinction between aircraft, aircraft owners and operating a business on the airport.
So can, can an aircraft in general aviation, a person owns an airplane out there, can they work on their own airplane?
To a certain extent, yes.
What's, what's the extent?
So there's a list of items that the FAA has identified as preventative maintenance, and they're welcome to work on their own aircraft, that. But anything, anything beyond that, then we get into the issue of doing major aircraft maintenance in a building that wasn't designed for that maintenance. It's not up to, it's not up to that code.
So if, say if I owned an airplane out there, which I don't, but, and, and I wanted to go out and do general maintenance, could I bring my mechanic with me to guide me?
No, because that's a, it's a commercial operation that goes against the lease.
So if I owned an airplane at that air, at that hangar, and I was out there to do general maintenance, how would you know that that was not my mechanic or not my mechanic? If he was just there to be with me?
I, I mean, I'm not following, if I, if I saw someone, if I saw someone working there and they're, they're turning wrenches...
Say they're just standing there telling me what to do.
Well, it would, again, it would depend on what, what kind of maintenance is it. Is it major, major maintenance, or is it just preventative maintenance?
I don't think, you say you're being fair to the general aviation. I really don't, from what I'm hearing, I don't think you're being fair to the general aviation. And I, and I agree with everything else in this lease. I see what, you know, but we had people come up to the podium in previous meetings saying they couldn't work on their own aircraft. I think there's a lot of mixed messages, or, I don't know, if you've met with these guys, folks, or whatever?
We've had discussions with them, and I've kind of come up with some pass forward if they, if they decide to go and, go in another direction. So it's just...
I think the direction they'll go in is to another airport.
And, and they have that option to do so.
Okay.
Does it have to be, does this have to be in there, where they, they have to use the airport's mechanics? It has to be in there? Do it have this contract?
No, they don't, they don't have to use the airport mechanic. They can, there is, currently, there is one mechanic at the airport, so that's their only choice at our airport, but they can go somewhere else to use another mechanic.
Not as simple as, not as simple as a car. You just don't...
I know.
You know, you don't, you don't call a tow truck to move your airplane somewhere else, so.
Josh?
Yeah, just, I guess, in summary, if there's, if you could give us just a brief, the real benefits, the summary, summarize the benefits of, of this, moving forward with this FBO.
All the benefits?
Or, I mean, just to, why you think this is a good thing?
They, they run a first-class business at a airport, Smyrna, Tennessee, that I've seen. They're, they're very eager to go. They're going to be investing money in three of the, two of the hangars and the general aviation facility that we currently have. They're going to be making improvements to those. They're going to be building a new general aviation terminal. They're going to be building a new maintenance hangar and also a new storage hangar. They're investing about a little over $8 million in the airport in the next several years. But I, they, they've got a good product. They've been in the business for, for quite a long time, and, and really, to them operating the airport, they're going to, they're going to be doing a lot more that's been, than has been done at the airport in probably the past 30 years.
Can we have, do we have anybody out there training people to fly now for private licenses?
Yes, Bayland Aviation has flight training, and UMS has a flight training operation to the school.
So we're, and we've got money invested in that, the county has UMS, the flight training facility?
So UMS, well, not their, not their flight training facility.
Pardon me?
I said, not their current flight training facility, no.
But we're using the airport to train people to fly.
UMS, yes.
Yeah, okay. But then we're passing something here that possibly restricts people from owning an airplane because they can't afford to pay for what this company may want for repairing their airplanes.
Like I said, they're, by the lease, they have to charge, you know, reasonable prices, so, you know, we can gauge that against other local airports.
So, okay, so if I own a plane, and I'm not a big corporation, I can't afford a hangar, my business, maybe the mechanic that I have can't afford a business to buy a hangar on the airport and install a bathroom out there, so that means I have to use their mechanic, but what if I don't like their mechanic? That means I have to leave this airport, right? Is that what I'm getting at? I have to leave the airport and I have to go use a different airport? Is that, I'm just trying to figure out, like, like, I, I understand where we're going here. We're growing the airport. But is there, I don't know, is there any workaround where we can have a, an extra hangar with a bathroom that we can lease out to small businesses, part-time?
Sure, if someone wants to build a hangar.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, we, we have plenty of land, excuse me, we have plenty of land to develop, and, and we have identified on our airport master plan several areas to put hangars, so if someone wanted to build that, they'd be more than welcome.
So you're saying somebody could go in the airport under this lease, not under this lease, but with this lease signed, somebody else could come in and build a hangar and start working on airplanes?
Yeah. What if somebody...
Well, if they can, why can't they do it now, the way they're doing it now? Why do they have to build a separate hangar? Why can't they just continue to build, to do what they're doing now?
Because in the hangars that they're in now, they aren't up to code for aircraft maintenance.
But they've been using those hangars for the last 20 years, 50 years.
If I was, I'm just throwing this out there...
Not a code enforcement officer, but...
Excuse me?
I said, I'm not a code enforcement officer, but they can't, they shouldn't be doing that in those hangars, and the fact that they, they weren't noticed...
I have another question. If I was a private business and I said I want to just build a hangar and install a bathroom, and, and I can lease it to small, smaller people that maybe not can afford to build a hangar and a bathroom, would I be able to lease it to them and then lease it to another person? That way, they can use the hangar whenever they're working on an individual's airplane?
Um...
I don't know if that's getting too tricky or not.
It's...
It is, and, and, you know, I've, I've come up with a plan where I think it's a path forward. If someone wanted to build a hangar strictly for aircraft maintenance, it would have to be for those people that, that own the hangar. I'll just, so I can't say, say if you had your own airplane and were either leasing, leasing a hangar, say you had your own airplane as a business, and again, this is where it differentiates from commercial operations to kind of private operations in what an airport can and can't allow in the airport.
I can't hardly understand this company signing a lease, and I, I'm not good at reading leases. I'm, you know, maybe, maybe our law department would be better at it, but this company signing a lease that would allow, that they would go and invest all this money, but allow the airport, Wacomiko County, to come in and build another hangar for somebody else to work on airplanes at the... I don't think, I don't think they understand, I don't think they know about that.
No, they do, because FAA doesn't allow airports to grant exclusive use to any, any one company. They have to open it up for anyone else. There may only be enough business for one company to do it, but if anyone else, else wanted to come in and do any of these things, that's why we have our airport minimum standards document that tells them exactly, exactly how they go about it. That way, it protects these people, and it also protects any future businesses on the airport. Just makes a level playing field for everyone.
Shani?
I have a question. I'm a layman. Some of this stuff was confusing, but the question I have, if you have these small planes, private planes, maybe four-seater, and suppose the plane was unsafe to fly, and they brought their mechanic in to look at it or fix it, but now I think, I understood you to say they would have to move it to another airport if they weren't satisfied with the other mechanic? So what would you do if they couldn't move it?
You know, if there's unusual circumstances where they didn't want to use our mechanic and they needed to get it to another airport, there's, there's mechanisms to do that. They can, they can get a ferry license to, to ferry it out. FAA has provisions for that. We could allow them, we could find a spot on them to do a temporary repair to fly it to another airport, so not being totally unreasonable when a circumstance like that would pop up.
All right. Tony, the new AMT program, does that tie into all of this at some point?
Well, it's going to create several mechanics locally that we don't have now, so it's, obviously, it's going to fill spots for Piedmont. It'll have mechanics available for, for this business potentially, or for other businesses, so right now, there's a real shortage of those people, so that's going to be very welcome here.
Thank you.
You'd mentioned that they could build their own hangar. Would they be leasing that property from the airport?
Yes, if, if they were to build a hangar, we would do just strictly a ground lease.
Ground lease for them. What is the cost of building a hangar? Because you're, you're saying, oh, they can build a hangar, but what's the cost of a hangar?
It depends on the size of it.
Probably at least a million, right?
Um, I, I'd hate to get... I, I'd hate to guess off the top of my head. Again, it depends, the size of it would really drive things or what kind of, you know, what kind of options they'd want on the hangar, so.
We just did a lot of, of maintenance on, on our hangars and we've, we've spent quite a lot of money just, the airport just upgrading and trying to maintain our hangars. I can't imagine what it actually really costs once you get through all the FAA regulations to actually build a hangar. I just, you know, when you say they can build a hangar, I don't know if that really is a, is a, we're looking at a solution there, really.
It's, it's one option, unfortunately.
It's an option. There's many options. I mean, they could build their own airport if they wanted to, but that's, I'm trying to be realistic. You said that you were, that you had asked for discounts for general aviation pilots?
For based pilots, yes.
Right. What, what concession has there been? What was the result of that?
We don't have any exact numbers. We're actually meeting with them next week to discuss specifics of that.
So it might be a set of circumstances whereby if, let's say they had their own mechanics working on their planes and then they shifted and they had Azure working on their planes, that there could be some type of a discount where it would be comparable for them to, to stay here and to lease in Wycomico County at our airport and still have their, their planes properly maintained without absorbing the cost to them?
I'm not sure how deep the discounts are, but, you know, with, when you have a, their own mechanic come in, that own mechanic doesn't have any overhead, so I don't know how you could be competitive with that.
Azure not come if, 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 if we take this out?
Sorry, take, take what out?
Like.
There's nothing in here that forbids it.
Right.
That is a separate initiative.
Okay, well, that's, I just want, I, you know, when you're flying an airplane, and I'm sure you're aware of this, and you're not comfortable with the mechanic that's working on the airplane, I'm not going to fly the airplane. And then we just lose people from the airport that are locals that have been here for years. I just, I just, for the life of me, I just can't think that we can't work with them a little bit more than tell them, hey, you got to build your own airport, air hangar and put a bathroom in it and, you know, I mean, a lot of these people, they, they got old airplanes and I don't know if they, they have the money to build a whole brand-new hangar. I don't know how that's fair. I think that's.
I think Azure is going to be offering, they're going to be offering a good product here from what I've seen.
I'm sure they are, I'm sure they are, yeah. Mm-hmm. So they're offering a really good product.
So obviously we want to make sure that we are operating within code and doing everything legally and above board and transparently. Why do we have code? Why do we have code as far as building hangars and, you know, what could, what could be done inside of them to update? You said more than just general maintenance. Why do we have code in the first place?
So the, the hangars that they're currently in, they're called T-hangers and it's, they're basically a long, long rectangle building and inside, basically they're shaped like a T, like an airplane would be with, you know, the wing and the fuselage, but they, and they're staggered, you know, back and forth. The interior walls are not, they're not fire stops. They're just basically a metal siding. There's gaps on top, so you'd have to basically build a firewall between each of these to be up to code to allow, and I'm not a code expert, but basically you need fire separation between these units because if one were to catch on fire, it's just going to spread through the whole thing and now you have 14 aircraft that are destroyed rather than just one.
This, this company is coming in to help upgrade all of these things to make sure that we are operating within code, that we are doing things legally. They're investing into this operation within the assumption that they will then, over time, make a profit on their operations of being here, but they're not going to, you know, give away $8 million worth of investment just for fun, right? They're going to do this for a reason, so.
They're, they're going to have a quality product and, and I think one of the reasons we are where we are today is because Bayland Aviation stopped doing aircraft maintenance many years ago. We had a lull where we didn't have, well, we didn't know of certain mechanics that we had on the airfield, but we did find one who was willing to rent one of our, rent one of our large hangars and, and provide that service. But apparently some, some of the hangar directors don't like his operation, but I think with the FBO, you know, I think they're going to be very aware of, big back, you know, from our, from our customers.
I just want to acknowledge one last thing, of course, you know, within the first couple of months that I joined the county council, I remember one of the significant moments for me was when we were having a discussion about, with your predecessor, about updating the airport and we were having some consternation of whether or not to spend money and until she just blurted out, "The lights on the runway are broken. We have, we have no lights on our runway." And I think that was a moment when the council finally understood, "Oh, we really, really, really do need to not just double down, but triple down on making sure if we're going to, if we're going to be a county that owns an airport, that we make sure that we are operating in the best way as possible." And that clearly we have not. If we can't even have lights on the runway fixed, we have not done a good job in, in maintaining. Now, in that last seven years or so, six and a half, seven years, we've done an incredible amount, which I really appreciate all that you've done to help lead that. I want to make sure that we continue to do things well and, and noteworthy and that we're growing for the future while also making sure that we, you know, for the folks who have had traditionally been here and been a part of the airport, it's more, it's more than just a place where they go and fix an airport. It's a part of their identity that we're not leaving any of them behind. But, but I'm sure you're, you're thinking through that and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and I certainly appreciate the council's support over the years for everything we have been able to do. And this is just one, one more thing I think that'll really help turn this airport around.
Just to clear something up, Josh was asking about them improving the airport. This company's not going to be improving the T-hangers, right? They're not going to?
No, the T-hangers are the airports.
Okay. I was on the airport commission years ago and the prior director there didn't really care about general aviation at all. In fact, he made it pretty clear, he didn't like it. You said at the beginning of this conversation that this company's going to give deep discounts or give discounts to the general aviation people, for the mechanic, but you don't know what it is because you don't meet until next week. So how do you?
I don't, I don't know exactly what it is, but that was, that was part of, that was part of the RFP and, and part of the agreement.
So really this, this isn't complete, what you brought us today?
It's complete, it just doesn't have a, it doesn't have a particular percentage for, there are so many different services they offer and we don't, we don't go into any.
I think I'd, I think I'd like to make a motion, we table this until we get a complete, complete information on what's going on. So I'd make that motion.
Do we have the ability to get that information?
I can get that information next week from them.
So motion to postpone, is there a second? Motion's second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution number?
Now, I would like to suggest that you work with this company to try to make sure that these general aviation people, I'm looking at this gentleman out here and I'm thinking, "I've got 20 years to go before I'll be 90. I hope I'm up here. Give me somebody, some information in 20 years." Well, I hope, I bet the people hope I'm not anyway.
You mean speaking as articulate?
Yeah, there you go.
I get it, no doubt. There's a motion, a second. Resolution 59-2025 has been postponed until the next council meeting unanimously. Tony, I would suggest, if I could, that we do some follow-up because I know this discussion came up at airport commission meeting, two commission meetings ago. A gentleman spoke before us, Mr. Lundekker spoke before us at the council meeting. The, we had a separate individual meeting where I was under the impression that things were going to be resolved completely, you know, completely sure that things were going to be resolved. Maybe I just missed it, I don't know. But then we find out that, that still, there's work that's left to be done. Azure is probably one of the best things that could happen to our airport in the last 50 years. If you, if you read this lease, it's absolutely fantastic of what, how much they want to partner with, with the airport and with this county, and they will no doubt take us to the next level. So I don't want them to have any impressions whatsoever that the council or Wycomico County government isn't 100% behind them. We just have this small issue that we'd like to resolve. I don't know whether it's a county issue. You say they could build a hangar, maybe one of the T-hangers that, that Joe was asking about, and I don't know, but maybe one of the T-hangers, the county could make some investments there so that these individual pilots could possibly work on their planes there. I have no idea. That may be the dumbest comment in, in, you know, in aviation history, but is there a way out? You suggest that you're looking for some type of means by which to find a way out for everyone and a compromise. That could possibly be some type of a measure that we could take?
One, one other thing that we've been looking at is because we don't have any empty hangars now, I was looking at possible space that, that someone could use to pull their aircraft on that's actually not, not causing a fire hazard to other aircraft or other buildings and, and possibly do maintenance there. So that's another avenue I'm looking at right now.
I understand, and I understand about, you know, having to follow FAA regulations, having to make sure these people are certified. I understand every bit of that and I appreciate what you've been trying to do all along and, you know, you're a big result as to why we're even where we are today with this, with this, with this lease. And, and again, I think we really want to make this happen, but if you could, this will buy you about a period of two weeks where we can look at those assurances. Okay.
We really appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you, Tony.
And for the record, the runway is lit up beautifully at night. I drove by there the other night. It really looks cool.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next fear consideration is resolution number 63-2025. This is approving the participating agreement with American Paving Fabrics, Inc. And we have Mr. Michael Swayby here, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 63-2025?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Swayby, how are you?
Doing fine, sir. How are you?
Good, thanks. Any comments that you would like to make?
Just a little background. It's, it's an agreement that we piggybacked on with Howard County to apply one of the paving solutions. We typically use tar and chip and we have an itinerary of paving alignments that we're ready to roll out current fiscal year. In between the remainder of this fiscal year and next, we're a little over $2 million worth of, so we're ready to go as soon as and if you all approve to award the agreement.
I have a question.
Yes, Shani.
Do you have a schedule when you're paving? Do you have an idea what streets you're going to be paving or roads?
We definitely have an idea of the locations and the alignments. Where it gets a little, a little fuzzy is when we actually, when the vendor rolls out, it takes a lot of attention on them to make sure that, you know, we don't tell them to do A, B, C, and D and then tell the public to take detours so they don't run into that work. And then instead of doing A, B, C, and D, they, for some reason, think it's a better idea to do A, B, C, and M. So it takes foresight, but we, we try to closely supervise them. And an area that, you know, I've said that we need a little more work on, but I think would be greatly appreciated by the public is some releases on a day-to-day basis about, you know, "We're paving Main Street. If you can avoid it, please do and we'll be done by Friday," kind of thing. So you can expect to see more of that out of us.
Because we get, I get calls, and I'm not quite sure, other people here get calls, of council members, about the roads condition.
Oh, yes.
That's why I'm asking that.
Yes, we do, we do have a list. I could share, I can share that with the group if, if, if you'd all like. In fact, I think we already have the spring paving schedule on the roads division website.
Okay.
I'll double-check that when I get back. If we don't, I definitely will publish it because there's a certain alignment and, you know, the vendor's aware of that and we try to organize them where it makes good geographic sense to go from one alignment to the next.
Questions? All those in favor of resolution 63-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Swayby.
Thank you.
Next is resolution number 64-2025. This is confirming the appointment of an Assistant Director of Administration.
Entertaining motion to approve resolution 64-2025?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Chair is opposed, resolution 64-2025 fails to pass by a vote of six to one.
Five to one.
Five to one, sorry.
We only have six.
Oh, yes, five to one, thank you.
Okay, next is resolution number 65-2025. This is extending the date for the adoption of the annual budget and appropriation bill from June the 1st to June the 15th, 2025. Charter section 705-F provides that the annual budget and appropriation bill shall be adopted by the county council not later than June the 1st or such date as may be set by resolution pursuant to section 707 of the charter, but no later than June the 15th. Extending the date for the adoption of the annual budget and appropriation bill will allow council additional time to follow review and discuss the executive's proposed budget. Also, June the 1st is on a Sunday and the next regularly scheduled council meeting is on June the 3rd, so this will allow the council to adopt the budget during a regular meeting unless a special meeting is needed.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 65-2025?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is resolution number 66-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year '25 operating budget to fund the city of Salisbury Fire Service rendered from January the 1st, 2024 through September the 30th, 2024 in the amount of $1,500,000. And Pam Olin, Director of Finance, is here if you have any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 66-2025?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution 66-2025 passes unanimously.
Next is resolution number 67-2025. This is approving the purchase of a Gradol XL 5100 from Elliott &amp; France, Inc. for the use by the Department of Public Works. And we have Mr. Michael Swayby here again, if you have any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 67-2025?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Morning, Mr. Swayby.
Good morning again all. This piece of equipment's very diversal, diversified. It's very heavy, so it can be engaged in a multitude of ways. One of the first ways we believe we will engage it is to assist with our own collection of dredge spoils from Sharp's Point. So it's good as a loader, it's good as a grader, and we don't actually have one of this type, type of equipment right now, so it's desperately needed.
What's the cost of this?
The cost of it is $631,000 and we're actually going to be leasing it, not buying it. Lease payments are over a 60-month term.
Yes, confused by that because I, I was curious too because it says a resolution approving the purchase, but then in the body of the text, it talks about an agreement for the lease. So it's not one in the same, am I correct?
That's correct. We're, we're not buying the equipment.
Do we need, do we need to amend it to the resolution approving? You know, I always get mixed up with the, with the resolution as to whether you pay any attention to all the wear-asses or whether you just go to the body of the resolution itself, but I would feel more comfortable if the resolution stated lease instead of purchasing the sole.
So just so you're aware, like leases in this format, we are actually considered the owner of them during the period of time that we have them. It's just an accounting rule. So the term purchases is, is, is the word used, but the method that we're paying for it, yes, is a lease. The narrow therefore be resolved is, does say the purchase with, with an agreement and then, but if council wants to, you know, say approving the lease purchase, you know, add the word lease in there, I'm not opposed to that concept.
I'd leave that up to.
Yeah, let's do it.
Legal. I would leave that to Mr. Benson. It's not a council issue, it's a legal issue. I just want to make sure that the format's what it should be. I don't know, I don't.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If, if I can just clarify one thing, I think at the end of the lease term, there's the option to purchase. Is that correct?
There's the option to purchase at an appraised value. There's the option to return the equipment.
Do you guys typically purchase them at the end, or do you return them?
Not for something like this. We would... Well, it's hard to see. It's hard to look forward.
Work it out before it gets there.
It's hard to look forward and see what the condition will be, but especially since we only have one of them, I could see that this piece of equipment's going to be used very regularly. And even, you know, when you maintain them as well as possible, we lease it for the full five years, and at that point, consider whether or not it's, you know...
So if you add the word lease before purchase, it makes it a, you know, the... It defines how we're making the purchase.
The first whereas clause says that it's for a lease. And then the second whereas clause, which uses the word purchase, also says a set forth in the agreement, and the form of the agreement is a lease agreement. So I don't think it needs to be changed unless council wants to change it.
That's what we wanted to hear about. Thanks. What are the financial arrangements here as far as the leasing?
I mean, it is, it's through a financing company, and the interest rate is competitive as to what the rates are currently.
You know what our obligations are going to be? Financial obligations? Mr. Swayby?
Yeah, we have the, and we've already built this into next year's budget, the lease payments associated with this. This is in '26's budget. It just took a while to get to this point because it was actually built into this year's budget as well. We just hadn't gotten to the point of getting all the documentation done. So there is funds in next year's budget to pay next year's leases, leased, leasing amount, is the word I'm trying to say. Sorry.
In a proven resolution, is there a lease term in this resolution?
There's. It's 60 months.
Schedule one, page 292.
Thanks.
And you don't know what...
I didn't go that far down.
I'm sorry.
Just one no. Perfect. Joe, go ahead.
Are you done? You don't know what the interest rate is on this?
I don't have that document. I didn't bring that documentation with me.
I find it, I've always, you know, looked at leases from leasing equipment in the past, or the option of leasing or buying, same with vehicles, is leasing, the interest rates are usually a little more, quite a bit more than what you can borrow money for. That's why people, most people borrow money. Borrow money and buy something instead of...
We don't have the mechanism as easily to... We don't have a mechanism easily in place for us to borrow funds for this to buy something like that. And again, when we're doing a general obligation bond, a general obligation bond is a 20-year term. There is no way we want to do a 20-year term on something that's possibly going to have a five- to eight-year life. So we have not historically created a line of credit for ourselves with somebody that we could utilize to purchase equipment. That is not something that we have investigated. I don't even know if governments are allowed to do that. Doesn't mean that we can't investigate that for the future, but to purchase this piece, we...
I would assume Gradol would probably have a financing arm to the company, you know, Ford Motor Company or General Motors or anybody.
So we look...
You could compare to that.
Right. We looked into, again, it was, in the process of creating this, it was determined to be that this was the best option for the leasing associated with it. I don't remember, I don't remember all the terms. I didn't bring that information with me. So I can't, I...
I can speak to that just a little bit. It might be best, a different way to look at this is, it's not so much that what interest rate is being assessed is the right question to ask, because we're not borrowing money and paying back a greater amount. What we're doing is, we're paying over 60 months, the amount of $10,300 and change per month. So that'll accumulate to roughly $618,000 over the lease. The actual cost of purchase is $631,000. But the difference between the two arrangements is, what we get during that 60-months lease is a variety of maintenance service upgrades. And by the time we get into the back part of that 60 months, when the equipment really begins to show its wear and act up, we're still only going to be replacing tires, refueling, wiper blades, and belts, the consumable items, while the company's going to come in and do the upgrades and the maintenance work, getting ahead of breakdowns and so forth. That's the value of paying the $618,000 over the 60 months.
I know how they work leases. I mean, they make leases, they try to make leases look like it's a great deal, but in the end, if you price something as, "I'm going to go in and just pay for it," it's usually a lot better deal. I mean, I've been choked down by car salesmen enough to know how that works. So anyway, we're not here to micromanage, right? You say the scheduled maintenance is included in this?
It is.
Because that's not your $59 oil change.
It's not.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Well, is this, it says Public Works. Is this being, is this solid waste that we're talking about?
It's actually...
I'm sorry.
It's Roads.
It's Roads.
It's Roads. Because dredging is a general fund item. So it is, it is being owned by Roads since, you know, one of the uses that he mentioned was dredging. Well, that is a general fund expense, not a solid waste expense.
What is with the correlation between using this soil for the landfill?
So there, we have to dispose of those soils somewhere, so we're getting beneficial use. So it benefits both half of, both solid waste and the general fund, because we're not paying somebody else to take these spoils. We're taking them ourselves and saving us money on the solid waste side. So both sides of the equation, we're saving money on the general fund, not having to take it to some other entity that we don't have. And we're saving money on the solid waste side because we don't have to buy from another entity.
You said this is in the '26 fiscal year. Is that part of the 7.2?
No. It's part of the Roads. If you look at the Roads budget, there's a line item that says lease in Roads. And that's where we budget this, the payments for it.
And I didn't mean to imply that was a dedicated and only use. That will be one of them. But, you know, we typically have ditching we have to do on a regular basis. We have pipe breakdowns where it involves a full dig up, and that's, this is an instrumental tool for something like that.
What's the in-hand date? When do we get it?
I believe it's the second week of June.
Okay.
So this is an existing piece of equipment. It doesn't have to be built. It was purchased through Sourcewell, and we located an item somewhere that's ready to be shipped, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor of resolution 67-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much for answering the questions.
Thank you.
Okay, next is resolution number 68-2025. This is authorizing Exxon Enterprise, Inc. as the sole source vendor for Exxon Justice software to be utilized by the Wachamico County State's Attorney's Office. As a reminder, the SM following the resolution number means supermajority. This means that five council members must vote in favor of it in order for it to pass.
That's going to be a tough majority. Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 68-2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution 68-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, good morning.
Good morning, counsel. Legislative Bill 2025-07 is being introduced. It's an act to amend Chapter 62 of the Wachamico County Code, Title of Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 62-1, Title of repealer, Section 62-2, Title of creation, Section 62-4, Title of member-appointed chairman, Section 62-6, Title of legal counsel, and Section 62-7, Title of establishment of the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, to dissolve the Wachamico County Planning and Zoning Commission and create a Wachamico County Planning and Zoning Commission. As council is aware, the decision has been made. Historically, the Wachamico County Planning Commission is a joint commission between the county and the city. Decision's been made to separate the county and the city commissions, and as part of that separation, this amendment to the existing code is being presented. And Andrew Illuminati from the county attorney's office is here if there be any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertaining motion from council to approve the introduction of legislative Bill 2025-07.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion. Mr. Illuminati?
Morning. We had a work session on this, took the feedback from the work session. We worked parts of the proposed bill, met with president, vice president, and council member Holloway, who serves on the planning commission, to go through suggestions from council at large. And the bill before you is the final version of those discussions. As Mr. Benson stated, there was a point in time when the county planning department and the city planning department were one. That separation occurred a number of years ago, and each department maintains its own planning department. Last week, the planning commission met. Wachamico County had nothing on the agenda. As the county attorney, I did not go and participate, spoke with the planning director for the county in advance about why should county resources be used. Nonetheless, county staff prepared all the agenda materials, contacted the planning commission members, and did all of the work at the expense of the county. That is but one reason why the executive is pursuing the dissolution of the current Planning and Zoning Commission and reestablishing it September 1st, 2025. There's been, we've addressed the various issues concerning any overlap. September 1st, if we get this first reading today, public hearing, I believe, can be second meeting in June?
Yes.
Then forward to the executive at the end of that week. She signs it into law, the 60 days later will provide more than enough time. Historically, the summer has been a less-than-robust time for the planning commission. The August meeting has usually been canceled due to the MAKO conference, but the last few years, the legislature has pushed forward substantial revisions to the cannabis law, which has required the commission to meet over the summer. Any, the city's working on its own comprehensive plan. They don't want to begin that work until the separation fully occurs. The county will be beginning to review its comprehensive plan. September 1st works. It's logical. And these changes basically solidify the current nomination process, but also add some stricter provisions requiring attendance at meetings, which is currently missing. So with, there are no questions?
What time do they usually hold those meetings?
The planning commission traditionally meets the third Thursday of every month at 1:30.
Is that time adjustable?
It is, in the sense, well, I guess anything's adjustable. This room is used by a number of different committees of the city and the county. So to the extent that there is another available time, that's a possibility, but there are various times that, and dates that are already reserved in this room cannot be used. Historically, when there's been something that has required a greater review, public comment, the civic center's been used, or the meeting date and time has been changed. The planning commission, unlike the Board of Appeals, is making sure that the certain criteria established within the code are met. The planning commission rarely grants special exceptions or variances to land use requirements. It's more about site plan approval, and the predetermined use of that land has already been set forth in the code. So it is different that... The reason why there's been an abundance of meetings recently is that the city has done code modifications. And so they want to rewrite their code, and just like for the county to amend its code as to zoning ordinances, it needs to first go through the planning commission. So there's been an abundance of public hearing recently from the city, but also the county, because there's been a number of code amendments. But day-to-day site plans don't get public comment. So if somebody, if a builder comes in with an expanded phase of a subdivision, there's a different community impact study that's done, and there's not really the opportunity for general public comment, like there are council meetings, like there are Board of Appeal meetings. So my understanding from the executive and based on the current chair is, to keep the current date and time the same, part of the justification for the separation is to avoid either comp pay or overtime pay. Moving that meeting to the evening does create that, we have that with the Board of Appeals. Some of the individuals who provide consultation to both serve in both capacities, so the zoning administrator is in both. If there becomes a point in time where it seems that the planning commission in its current capacity on those Thursdays is not meeting, obviously, if something can be revisited, and...
Is that something that we can do? We can investigate to see what day of the week, we can possibly do it later in the, maybe not 6 o'clock, maybe 4:30 or something, so that people like myself or people that aren't retired can come?
Well, right now, the room is open at 5 o'clock on Thursday. Correct?
Open at 5?
The third?
I thought you said 1.
So currently, it's at 1:30.
We're using it at 1:00 now, but it's open at 5:00.
Okay.
Laura's check, right?
Yes, I was requested a couple of weeks ago to look at the calendar, and it appeared as though the third Thursday of the month in the evening was open.
The city not, maybe I missed that. Would the city not just keep this spot, given that the majority of the agenda has been with the city?
They'll keep the 1:30 spot.
Yeah.
So we can't use the 1:30 spot? We can't use the same time as the city, or we'd be in the same room?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So we need to change.
We'd have to move it, right?
So I've got, are you done, James?
I'm done. I'll let you talk.
I've got several reasons why it needs to be changed. And do we do an amendment here, or do we do an amendment at the public, at the time of the...
We're just introducing it now, Joe. I would suggest that we do the amendment when we vote on the bill itself.
So, but I can give my reasons now, correct?
Yes, you may.
Yeah. I've been on the planning and zoning board for the past few years, and yes, I agree that we needed to separate. And I'm glad that the county executive has moved on this. It's been talked about for, long before this county executive was here. There's, the big word in the room is transparency. That's been the word that was used in the last election. That's a word politicians love to use.
Right.
So since I've been on the board, we've had a number of issues that has drawn people to our meetings, which I understand, we got a letter from the chair that said that we don't have participation. Well, we've had super participation about the downtown issues, but that's not going to be the county issue anymore. But the county could come up with something. We could end up with something that's not, that draws people, hopefully not as contentious as what's been going on downtown. But since I've been on there, we've had the DAF tank issue, of course. We've had cannabis issue. We've had the kennel issue, digester issue. We've had all these different things that's come along. Some of them, you know, has gotten real involved with the planning and zoning commission, and some haven't. Having the meeting at 5 o'clock gives more people the chance to go to these meetings, so they don't have to take off work, or they can take off work a little early. The big difference is going to give somebody that works a day job the opportunity to participate on the board. As you've got right now, the only people that can really participate on that board at 1:30 in the afternoon are people that have the flexibility of not having to go to a day job. In other words, self-employed, not-employed, whatever, which is fine, but it will give somebody from the general public more of an opportunity. So I think we need to consider that. And Laura, if you could, put a temporary hold on the room at 5 o'clock in case the council does vote to do that. If they don't, you know, we can release it. I just don't want somebody coming along, getting the room first. Might happen.
I, yeah, I, I kind of go both ways on this. I know I've had conversations with you, Joe, as well, and I appreciate Mr. DeShiel, Chairman DeShiel, sending the letter to give us his perspective on it, and I know, Joe, you have your unique perspective as well, serving on it, on the planning commission. I guess the real question is for, to develop consistency. The 1 o'clock, I understand, is it 1:00, 1:30? The 1:30, I understand, a lot of these meetings, as Chairman DeShiel said, a lot of them are just, you know, developers that come in and they want to discuss it with, with the commission, and those are the conversations that develop, and probably 80% of it is nothing more than that. Doesn't require the public to be there at all. My concerns, Mr. Lemonati, and I would say this to Chairman DeShiel as well, is the fact that when it does require public input, 1:30 is not going to be a convenient time, and I think to send, then even to, to maybe decide as a commission, well, then because we need the public, we're going to do it at 5 o'clock today, or next week, or whatever, two weeks from now, instead of 1 o'clock. But the majority of people get used to consistency, and they would pop, most likely be surprised if all of a sudden, it was at 5, I thought these things were at 1:30. I saw that more recently, the city of Salisbury, where they scheduled a special meeting, I can't remember what it was, but they, they scheduled a special meeting, and they held it an hour earlier than normal, to, to, I guess, to get more input, but nobody knew it. Everybody showed up at 6 o'clock, even though it may have been publicly announced. So that's my concerns, is that we develop some type of consistency, and I get the comp time, believe me, I understand all that, where the, you know, the people who have to be there for planning and zoning can come in at 1:30 in the middle of the day. It's no comp time, it's not inconvenient for them. So I'm kind of like divided as to what I think is the better solution here in regard to that. What large degree of public input is, really changes the balance of this, Joe? That's what I'm concerned about.
I thought the county executive said last week that, was it about the Safari at the Quarry, that comp time didn't cost any extra? Did she state that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And as far as consistency, we're changing the consistency that we've had all these years because we're going to two different, two different boards instead of just one.
No, when I say consistency, I mean like from here on out.
Yeah, okay.
May, might it be more consistent to say, okay, it's going to be at 5 o'clock every day?
There's going to be months we don't even have a meeting, right? Probably. From what, from what Tracy said.
There wasn't been a meeting last month.
Yeah, from what Tracy said, there is this, you know, but I think the biggest issue for me is the transparency part, so.
I think, I have to agree with Joe. From the meeting we had last night, neighborhoods and community residents wants to know what happens, if a development's coming about or whatever's coming about. This is one way of communicating with, with the neighborhood, and I also think 5 o'clock would be a good time to have that, as was suggested, because people work. And the agenda, we can send out, I was making a list of communications so the community can see it. You might could put it on PAC 14 or something like that to make people aware of what's coming in their neighborhood or their community.
That's already posted in the Agenda Center. The entire brief book is available online with all the site plans.
I'm not talking about the website, I'm talking like PAC 14, just the agenda on PAC 14 for planning and zoning. That's what I'm saying, you know? I mean, we could do that.
You know, last night was a perfect, perfect example. I didn't go to that meeting, Jeff went, but Title Health came in with this project that they have on the west side, and it was, it was accelerated, I'll put it that way, over, I mean, they met all the rules and regulations, don't get me wrong, but it was really accelerated. And if people from that neighborhood that were at that meeting last night wanted to be to that meeting that we had, that planned and zoning, a lot of them wouldn't have been able to be there because they were working. So the other thing, Andrew, you mentioned community impact statement being one of the reasons. You didn't make it to this last meeting because nothing from the county was on there. But you know, we, the count, the planning commission has pretty much said, we want a community impact statement, and that's what we've lived by for what, a past year or so, pretty much?
For a while.
Yeah, I brought that up, you know, because we were giving these waivers. Well, guess what? Last week at this town center, they asked for a community, a waiver for the community impact statement again. They said they brought it back, so.
Any questions, comments?
Would moving it to the later time provide an opportunity for people who might not be retired to serve on the planning commission as positions come open?
If somebody wants to serve, they're going to serve when it's available, would be the answer, I think.
If they couldn't get off work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have other meetings that meet during the day. I'm just, you got the letter from Chairman DeShiel.
Right.
I'm here if you have questions about the legislation, if you want to make an amendment, that's your prerogative to make that amendment. I'd like to work to incorporate that into it so that it flows logical, but I'm also reciting the executive's position, which was the comp pay, and then council.
He said it doesn't cost anymore, right? He said that two weeks ago, wasn't it, two weeks ago?
So I guess, I, I think, I completely behind Mr. Holloway as far as transparency and making sure the public can get to this. I think that makes total sense. I don't understand the flexibility situation. Are we that unflexible as government that if someone has to stay an extra hour and a half, they can't just come in an hour and a half later? And I, I don't understand that part at all, and I have zero tolerance for any bit of government bureaucracy and, and cheap rules like that. So that being said, that aside, as far as this particular situation, this is legislation that we are putting in. I don't think legislation should be, well, legislation should be strict and not flexible, whereas what a committee comes up with should be, you know, or pardon, legislation should be clear and, and not defined. So I don't think we should be defining a time within legislation, but maybe the, the way to address that, if we all thought that it should move to, to the time, and I defer to Mr. Holloway, having served on the committee for many years, if it's 5 o'clock or something like that, then maybe we would put together a letter to send in support to the committee to then make those changes. But I don't know if we want to specify that in legislation, if maybe I'm misunderstanding that.
That is an excellent point, Mrs. Hurley or Mr. Benson. We don't, I don't think we should put the time in a legislative bill. If you want to change the time, we have to, we have to go through the entire six, you know, 60-day process to change the time on a legislative bill. Could we not find a better means by which establishing a time like through a separate resolution?
So my, my thoughts are, if council wants any say over the time, then you write it into the legislation, but you are correct, in order to amend it, you do have to go through that legislative process, and it does take, you know, 60 to 90 days.
You've got to do it anyway, right?
I'd like to say I'm okay with making it in, putting a time in there. I respect everyone's opinion on that, but like our council meetings, we have a time that we have to be here, and it's in the charter, and I'm fine with it. Look, we need to make it 5 o'clock. I mean, you know, you put it at 1 o'clock, if you don't put a time in it, it's going to be 1 o'clock. If you put a time in it, they're going to have it at 5 o'clock, more people are going to be able to attend, and then it'll be less headaches for all of us up on here on this board, because everyone asks us what's going on when we could have had the meeting at 5 o'clock, and then more people could have attended. That's, that's where I'm at. So I don't know, Joe, you wanted to make a motion, and we just put this in here right now and get it over with, or we want to wait?
This would be the only committee where you're enumerating a specific date and time, like...
Maybe that's a good start to do something.
It's something to explore between now and the public hearing. I think that would probably be the best.
Yeah, but that's going to delay the changing of the...
No, it doesn't.
It's not going to delay it?
No, because at the public, after the public hearing, you can still make a motion to amend at that time.
All right, okay. As long as it doesn't delay us doing what we're trying to do as far as, okay.
Yeah, and that'll, I think, in that way, yeah, I agree with Andrew, because we need, I think we need to think it through, this was the most effective way. We could do it, we could do an introduction, we could do the legislative bill and a resolution same day, and establish the same process, but if it ever needed to be changed again, it could be done immediately through, through another resolution.
Okay, if that's the route we want to take, and it works, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
As long as we can make it 5 o'clock.
Just to make it clear, though, just because, I mean, I serve on the NRCAC, the National Streets Constitution Advisory Committee, there's other ones, we all serve on different ones. You know, we've usually left that open to the committees to try to be clear, depending upon who their members are, what time works for them, and then getting that information out to the public. I understand that this is a slight bit different, just because this could impact the, this is not an advisory committee, this is something that may be, that has a whole lot more, that needs more transparency, and so for that, I defer to Councilman Holloway on that. But I just want to make it known that obviously, the more that we can still be flexible in that, especially if there's like a holiday or something pops up and things get pushed back, we don't want to have any issues there, and then have the public concern like, why didn't you meet at 5 o'clock? You were supposed to, and then you have to go and explain why. Yeah, yeah, it's Christmas Day, right. So anyway, that's why, thank you.
All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2025, a seven say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Legislative bill introduction passes unanimously. Thank you, Andrew. Next item on the agenda is the Angie Chetel, our internal auditor, with a couple of resolutions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council President Cannon and Wycomico County Council. I, Internal Auditor Anjali Chetel, would like to present Resolution 492025, accepting the Safari at the Quarry Special Event Audit Report.
And a motion from council to approve Resolution 492025. Move. Second. Need a second for discussion.
For discussion, yes.
Yes, okay, I got a motion, a second, okay, no discussion. Angie?
So again, I performed an audit of the Safari at the Quarry event. It was originally presented on May 6th, Legislative Day Number 9. And I, I wanted to note, for the public and, and perhaps even some counsel and executive, that the exhibits B and C in this resolution, as well as photos and videos that were presented during the introduction of this audit, were not part of my audit report. They were, council added, added for their own decision-making process regarding this resolution. And then I would also like to note, some events that have occurred since then, the county council sent a letter to the executive, to which I was CC'd on. The executive also sent a letter to the council, which I was CC'd on. On May 14th, I emailed a package of support documents to the council president, and I CC'd the council attorney. And there's a recommendation I would like to make for the council to make the motion. So I'm not making this motion, it's just a recommendation regarding the, what are called sometimes the recognition component of the internal audit report. And I can, I can go to the standards, it's not required that I recognize the efforts of the departments, but it is something that is permissible in final communications. So the, the recommendation would be, on the first page, I, I say that, the, the report cover page says, "The IA extends appreciation to management and staff for their timely assistance, cooperation, and candid assessment during the audit process," and instead replacing that with, "The IA wishes to extend appreciation for the efforts of cooperation made by management and staff during the audit." The other option would be to remove that sentence altogether, because the sentence apparently has created some confusion with various people. And then the...
Comment about that? Were you waiting for a comment on that?
If, if you'd like to, yeah, no, please.
Well, I guess, in reading that, in reading the response of that eight-page, whatever it was that the county executive sent, I can find you were just trying to be kind, because you basically said throughout your audit, in different parts of it, that you were not furnished with the information that you were, that you were asking for, correct? No, you don't have to answer that. Okay. I heard what you said. So anyway, I suggest you just take it out and just, that's where, that's where I would leave it.
Right.
Don't reference anything.
Yeah, it's...
You know, do your job.
Contradictory.
If they don't fulfill their, their end of the bargain, then you can put something in there. I asked for this, and they didn't give it to me.
Also, on page 11, there's a, a last sentence of the, on page 11, the Wycomico County Office of the Internal Auditor would like to thank management and staff from the various departments. After that, it says, "For their timely cooperation and assistance during the audit," and then there could be replacing that with, "For the efforts of cooperation made during the audit," or striking that entire section, because it's, the section's called, let me go to the page, but it's, it's like, you know, closing remarks. So either just removing it or changing it to "The efforts of cooperation made during the audit." And, and I would like to point out, even if documents were, even if every single document was not provided that was requested, that doesn't necessarily mean that there wasn't some cooperation. I regularly have audits where there's not all documentation, right? And so my recommendations are sometimes about the documentation. So there still was some level of cooperation, even if there were some documents missed.
If they're not cooperating, why are you praising them?
There, there was cooperation, it's just that not all documents requested were provided, perhaps because the documents weren't tracked in the first place, and that goes to the recommendation for tracking into the future. But, but again, we can strike it, because the sentence has led to confusion, I acknowledge that now. So if, if we want to change the sentence to, from timely cooperation to just efforts of cooperation, or striking it completely, it's something that you would have to make that recommendation, the, the motion. I'm just making those recommendations now, that there's two different sentences, one that's thanking them, and then the other is the extending the appreciation.
I mean, what we're dealing with here is semantics without a doubt, but unfortunately, in your process, no different than what PKS does for the county, when they do the auditing for the county, there is particular auditing jargon that is used, which always thanks management for their cooperation. Unfortunately, in this instance, management, the administration tried to use that, that jargon to suggest that your entire audit was, was at fault, because you were, you were contradicting yourself. So if the public wants to know why we're going through all of this, it's because of that. We, you know, if you want, if you want us to, you know, call it like it is, we'll call it like it is. So that's why the amendments are being put in today, or being suggested. But it will have, as Ms. Chetel said, it will have to come from a council person as to how you want to make the amendment, as to whether you want to strike it entirely, or whether you want to amend it, as was given us an alternative with a replacement. I, I do understand Ms. Chetel's concerns that a replacement would be better than striking entirely, because at some, some portions of the audit, there was cooperation, even though we certainly, we certainly know there was stonewalling, and a, a large portion of this audit, which is very surprising, there was still, there were still some individuals who did participate and try to cooperate with the, with the internal auditor, and I think we need to not just, we need to recognize that as well. Jeff?
Can I make some comments before a motion?
Yes.
So, Ms. Chetel, thank you. This took a lot longer than we thought. We've recently been asked, why are you guys still talking about this after a year? Well, the simple answer is, because we've been waiting for a year to get the information to you, so you could do this. We've heard the expression, "Stonewalt." I slash we slash you did not get the requested information in a timely fashion, full stop. This event had no business plan. Reckon Parks were not involved in this event. If they were, we probably would have had a different result. Started off with an improperly structured MOU. The economic impact, that's highly questionable, because if you do the math, it would indicate that every single person that attended this event spent in excess of $700. I'm pretty sure that's not correct. So I do thank you for your exhausting efforts trying to get information and put this together to the best of your ability. I'd like you to make a motion that on page one, we strike the last sentence where it says, "IA extends appreciation to management and staff for their timely assistance, cooperation, and candid assessment during the audit process."
Full strike?
Full strike.
Okay, there's a motion to strike, second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion to amend page one passes unanimously. Anything else, Jeff? The page 11?
I'd like to make another motion on page 11. The very last sentence that starts, "The Wycomico County Office of the Internal Auditor would like to thank management and staff from the various departments." And I would like to strike the sentence after that, where it says, "For their timely cooperation and assistance during the audit." Full strike.
There's a motion, is there a sentence, second? Is there a second?
Jeff?
Is there a second?
Jeff?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, thank you. You have a question, Joe?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Shady.
On page 11, can you read what you wanted to strike again? The last sentence on page 11, it says, "The Wycomico County Office of the Internal Auditor would like to thank management and staff from the various departments." Asking to strike that? No, no, no. The part after that, where it says, "For their timely cooperation and assistance during the audit." Strike that? If you want to strike, okay. Yes. Well, why are we leaving the first sentence in? When the sentence that starts, that basically says the same thing, doesn't it?
If I can add something to that?
First sentence, first sentence basically, "Would like to thank the management and staff from the various departments."
I agree.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead.
The second portion, it's a, I'm not an English teacher, so I don't know if it's a subclause, or, but there's two separate clauses in it, so the first is that I'm thanking them, and the second part is what I'm thanking them for. And so, modifying the part of what I'm thanking them for within that sentence. So, if we could remove what I'm thanking them for, and just saying, "Thank you" to the various departments, and then leaving it that, or modifying the thing that I'm thanking them for, from that timely cooperation and assistance, to just efforts of cooperation. The other option would be just removing the sentence completely.
I would think just removing the whole sentence completely. That's up to you, Jeff, I'll leave it up to you.
I agree.
Page 11, the whole thing, just...
Asking you to, for a friendly amendment to your...
Amendment to the amendment.
Strike the entire sentence.
I'm still wanting to acknowledge their efforts, as weak as they were, in cooperation with you.
Strike the one, and then strike the one later.
Strike the end of that sentence.
Yeah, Joe, just to take out, "For their timely cooperation."
Okay, that's fine.
Hey, asked, answered, that's good.
You got a second on that amendment, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment as stated by Vice President Merritt, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes unanimously. Anything else?
Yeah.
Joe?
Make a motion to acknowledge the acceptance of this audit, instead of accepting it. A motion to amend Resolution 49-25 to, 2025, to delete the word "accepting" and replace it with "acknowledging it." My concern with "accepting" means that we agree with it, and I don't think probably anybody on this council, maybe, well, I can't speak for everybody on the council, but the word "accepting" means, hey, it's, everything's good, and everything wasn't good with it. So, all we can do is acknowledge that we got it.
You're saying you want to amend that in the summary heading, as well as in the "now therefore" paragraph?
Correct.
Got some motions, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes unanimously.
Can I make a...
Yes, Jeff?
With the timeline of this whole thing, of being in excess of a year, I read a news clipping this morning, apparently American Idol just finished, and they compiled over 26 million votes during the last commercial break. So, if that technology is out there, why would it take a year for us to get the results of an event that drew just over 100 people? And that's just astounding to me.
Any other motions? Josh?
To move.
Any other motions?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
I had a question.
If I could, Council, I believe that the council letter on May 8th, did anybody want to discuss that, or potentially adding it?
Oh, add the council letter?
The council letter's part of the record?
I'm not making that specifically a recommendation, because my audit report's just my audit report, but I, there was something about tabling this until that letter went out, and then that letter went out on May 8th.
Jeff, any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion where we add a copy of the letter that was submitted to the county executive dated May 8th, as Exhibit D to the resolution.
Second? Do you need a second for that?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, you want to finish that paragraph, because the resolution includes the summary of everything that's attached.
Okay. Let me, I'll make a motion to add a copy of the letter submitted to the county executive dated May 8th, 2025, as Exhibit D to the resolution, by adding a "whereas" paragraph that says, "The county council has submitted a letter to the county executive dated May 8th, 2025, documenting concerns made by members of the public and council members, attached as Exhibit D." And in the "now therefore" paragraph, add, "And the letter to the county executive, attached as Exhibit D."
So, that's a revised motion, is there a second?
Second.
We're striking the original. There's motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing on, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes unanimously. Any other comments in reference to this resolution? Yes?
Just a question of mine, I guess, getting back to the, I know we've seen so many different versions of this, and you've edited, and God bless you for spending as much time on this as you have. So, I guess, what is our, what is your intent, I guess, Angelie, with trying to, with this report?
To, my primary objective in this was to find and report. So, the objective of the report is literally just to report what I found, and then for management to make their decisions, council making decisions that pertain to law and funding, for the, you know, if the executive does anything going forward. And I think that what you may be, in the last meeting, I think you mentioned, and I was trying to find the quote in the, and I couldn't find it, where you said something about striking in the conclusion about events going forward. And if that...
I didn't see it in there, so that's good.
Yeah, so, if you have a question on that, or a concern for the report, for those going-forward items, I would like to point out, though, that for the going-forward, that if it's to not have anything there that could preclude potentially a park, right? So, there's the, and this is where, you know, I'm stepping out of this, this is not my, me being in management, you know, it's for council and the executive about park events versus non-park, versus events with cars, and so forth. So, I tried to keep this as non, my opinion, I tried to remove my opinion as much as possible from this, and just to find and report.
So, I guess, the question at hand that I was bringing up is, kind of, what is the intent of this, of going through this whole process? Is it to then further help give guidance to future events, or is it specific to this particular property, or is it for future situations like this? I guess, what do we hope to get out of it? That's kind of the rhetorical question that's in my mind. I mean, the key part of this, obviously, is that we entered in, the county entered into an agreement where we would never have a full understanding of what is going to happen, what profits or what costs go into it. So, we're kind of always going to be at a, you know, I guess, we are never fully going to understand that, and that is what it is. This is why you don't, you know, this is why we have set fees as to if we're doing something, we're very clear on that, this is what our costs are, good luck if you lose money, gain money, whatever. We should not be doing events, period, on this property or any of these situations. I think we tried to address that through legislation in general. But I guess, does this do anything to make sure that we are no longer in entering into, you know, 10% of profit-type contracts and things like that? I know you have it on page seven, on item two, with a written rental and permit procedures and controls there, that the management of the county did not receive a 10% payment for the, but I guess, where are we being prescriptive, or is that even a function of this, of the intent of this report? Or where are we being prescriptive to say that, hey, we shouldn't be entering into 10% of, you know, profit comment, you know, contracts and things like that, I guess? I say all that, and I'm so darn tired of even talking about this issue. But that being said, I guess, question at hand, was, what is the intent of this? What do we want to get out of it? And I've already heard from enough folks that live there, basically saying, hey, we just don't want to accept this, we don't want this accepted, because this feels like this is, you know, that this is stepping on our, that this is never going to be accurate, and somehow it's going to be used as a, as a way to further, to actually further future events there. And so, it's best just to let sleeping dogs lie, or whatever, so, I guess, response.
So, before I came in here, I just looked at the audited financial statements, and just to, sort of for bigger picture about events generally, recreation events, not Safari at the Quarry, but the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. Recreation is a general fund, it's not an enterprise, it doesn't make money, right? In the last audited financial statements, the net profit margin, which is really a net loss margin, was negative 1.44. That's where you take the net income and compare it to the total revenues. We don't use the word "net income" here, we use "excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures," right? So, it's, the fact that it didn't make money isn't something new for recreation events, even though it was at a different department.
But the type of contract that we entered into is new. We would not normally enter into something, hey, we're just, just give us some money at the end, you know, that's not the way we run business. We usually do, hey, this is what it's going to cost us, this is what we do, you know, you then, you know, go ahead, if you want to, you know, we'll open up the parameters for you to have fun and to do your event, but, you know, what amount you make is not on to us.
I think, Josh, to answer your question, really, from my perspective, that the entire process, from day one on this event, was done so surreptitiously, that we felt it was an obligation on our part to find out what really happened, not for any resolution as to how we can correct it in the future. No, we certainly do not want a process like this to be done again, under any circumstances, under the same condition. But that's really, I think, is the initiative, just to find some resolution, as what the heck really happened, and what did it really cost, and it's not just for the council, but for the public as well. What did it cost the county? What did it cost the taxpayers of Wycomico County? And unfortunately, similar to what I think you suggested, we still don't have a resolution to it all, we're getting very exhausted by this, which is what happens when things are processed like this. But I still think, in all honesty, it's something I don't believe we reviewed, maybe we did, I still really think that the explanation, for a ridiculous explanation, that only five hours was spent, no one could possibly believe that. I'm wondering whether or not we should have pursued further as to what was possibly done, and classified as comp time, under the guise, that comp time doesn't cost the county any money, and we know that's not true. And I'm wondering if maybe that probably is one key issue that was left out of this audit, is, okay, you've told us about the cash money, what about the comp time? What was that impact to the citizens and the government of Wycomico County?
And that's an excellent question, and we have another audit report after this one about leave, and I do discuss comp time in it, so we can definitely talk, so we'll learn more about the comp. And I, so, thank you, President Cannon, that was an excellent reflection and segue, but, and then also coming back to Councilmember Hastings, the prescriptives going forward, I would like to point out that, and the council attorney may be the best one to guide the council on this, but when I was looking at criteria for this audit, I had difficulty in turning to the code, because the code provision on recreation is limited solely to events that are at locations that are 100% recreation. And I didn't see a clause in there that prohibited recreational events at anything else, right? So, there wasn't like a, and there could have been, but I didn't see anything that restricted recreation events from occurring in places outside of those 100% dedicated recreation places.
Is that, just for clarity, is that a consideration, that maybe that could be something, legislation-wise, the council could come up, if there are events, which I think we tried to get at that at the previous legislation, but is that a understanding, that maybe if there are to be other events for money-making schemes, or scenarios, or whatever, that we would then, that would come before council for approval, or something that's outside of the norm of what happens within recreation and parks, kind of work?
Yeah, so, I encourage you to look at the code, if I can find quickly the, it's an entire code chapter. I know, I believe code section 179 is under it, so whatever chapter that is, to look at that, and that might help you, but again, I recommend that you work with the council attorney going forward on that.
Thank you.
And the county attorney, of course.
Any questions or comments?
I think the most important thing about this audit, it is exposed, I don't want to say this and be kind, it has exposed the methods that our current executive administration has used against citizens. If you don't agree with her, if something's written or said, what you're going to face, you face that in the response of your letter. Last year, when we cut back on the tipping fees, I remember the county executive coming to the podium, basically blaming me for not informing the businesses, when it was actually their job. You know, anybody that writes or says anything that they don't agree with, that she doesn't agree with, I mean, you kind of get attacked, and I can't apologize for her about the letter she wrote about you, but I will say that I'm sorry that you had to endure that. So, but I think that's one of the more important things about this audit, it has exposed a lot of things, it shows a pattern of what's going on in Wycomico County, so.
Joe, any other questions, comments? Seeing on, all those in favor of Resolution 49-2025 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, Resolution 49-2025 as amended, passes unanimously.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for the next one, all right, I'd like to present Resolution 69-2025, accepting the leave audit report.
Attained motion from council to approve Resolution 69-2025.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of leave time. The focus of the exercise was to determine the adequacy of procedures and controls in place for assigning compensatory time and payout compensatory time exceeding a carryover allowance. The objectives were to evaluate the county's adherence to rules in assigning compensatory time, evaluating payouts, if any, of compensatory time exceeding carryover allowance, and to make recommendations if appropriate. I concluded the program design was satisfactory, and I had eight findings and other noteworthy observations, with related recommendations regarding payout provision for compensatory leave, leave granted by the executive, circuit court holidays, Resolution 122-2007, sick leave types, automated time reporting solution, policy for county holiday leave payouts, and accrual for part-time employees, and that last one was remediated. Management did provide a response. The audit report contains additional information, and will be posted on the county website in the usual manner, if approved, and acknowledge efforts made by the departments, and I would be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
On the Council President Cannon, you would discuss the compensatory time not costing anything. I would like to note, the part of the scope of the audit was looking at, there's a federal regulation, 29 CFR, Part 553, Application of Fair Labor Standards Act...
regulation, 29 CFR Part 553, Application of Fair Labor Standards Act, to employees of state and local governments, 53.2 statutory provisions. And so there's, there's some language in there about paying out employees for their compensatory time once it hits a certain threshold. There's a recommendation in there regarding the, how the county makes those payouts, but, you know, the county does make payouts. The county makes payouts partly for this, and then upon leaving the county service, there are certain types of leave that do get paid out, compensatory, the comp time being one of them, as well as the holiday vacation. Sick is a little different. There's some sort of ratio, I don't know it off the top of my head, for how that happens.
Yes, a question similar to what Councilman Hastings asked on the prior audit. Where do you think this will leave us as far as some idea? Because there's the knowledge in here, but what you have in here, you have a lot of conflicts with the personnel manual. There were many instances here. I think you said that 20%, of the sick leave, you found there to be somewhat of a conflict with that as well. Where do we, where will we go from here with this? Because there were a lot of issues in this report. Do we, does that require sort of a mandatory follow-up in maybe the fiscal year '26?
Yes, and this past year, I didn't outline the follow-ups in the audit plan, and I think that's leading to these follow-ups not occurring this year. So in the next audit plan, I will be including follow-up from, and then that prior years, as well as follow-up from the two years ago that didn't get followed up this year. Sometimes they don't necessarily, there's, I don't want to get into the two specifics of it, but I think just having on the audit plan, the specific follow-ups that are going to occur from that last year, and so including this in the follow-ups.
I've got a question.
Sure.
So a few years ago, I think we had to do a budget transfer when an employee retired due to the amount of holiday, sick time, whatever, you know, some of the, I think it was seven, wasn't it $70,000 or $80,000 or something like that? I can't remember now. It's been quite a few years ago. But anyway, is there anything in this to prevent that from happening where it's not built up to such a, could you explain that?
Yeah, so recommendation number seven was the policy for county holiday leave payout. And I specifically said holiday leave because it is a very high figure for certain departments. And my understanding from some of these departments, or from one department, was that it can be so high that when the person leaves and they have to do this payout of that comp time, holiday, and so forth, that they actually don't have the budget to hire anybody new because they've, that money was used for that person's payout. So, so that was the recommendation to, for the county, working with the county attorney as appropriate, to establish a policy to budget for that holiday leave payout when a retirement or qualifying event can be reasonably forecasted. And then in the management response, they, they agreed with the finding, but they will, it says, but will not follow the recommendation. In budgeting, it says, we believe it is a best practice to include budget lines for holiday leave payouts. However, we hesitate to include it as a policy as the budgeting process is already overburdened with several mandates, and a policy would bind future executives without regards to the circumstances they may face. So I made that recommendation. It was specific to holiday, but it could apply to all types of leave, but the, they're not following, it says here that they're not following the recommendation.
So is that something that the council needs to address? Is there's enough agreement, or do we leave it alone?
I think we, yes, go ahead, Ms. Hurley.
I just want to clarify that with the last go-around of charter amendments we did, it was changed so that way, any changes to the personnel manual have to come as a recommendation from the county executive. Council can no longer just make that suggestion and make the change yourselves. It actually has to come as a recommendation from the county executive.
All those in favor of Resolution 69-2025?
Excuse me just a second.
Yes, Bob.
In the last, I know this is Safari at the Quarry, but you changed on the resolution, you took the language out, the last sentence in the, in the paragraph, and then in the findings, you know, with regard to thanking. And I, is that a policy you're going to follow from now on, on all of these, or was that unique to the Safari at the Quarry?
It was the first time we've ever amended an internal audit in your report, Bob.
So, again, you view that as a, as a, not a, that's not something that's going to be done in the future, so that the auditor will put that language in future reports?
That's a good question, and honestly, you know, Angie could answer that, I imagine, but I would really suggest strongly that, you know, you separate yourself from the typical jargon of auditing and really put a, as Justin put a true definition in there of what the circumstances were and how, how things progressed. I really think so. As long as that doesn't compromise, you know, the integrity of the process itself.
I, I think that the general language about appreciating efforts is what I would like to do just going forward, because I think everybody makes, and I genuinely believe this, for, for all human beings all over the planet, people do make efforts. Even if they're not the efforts that are up to somebody else's standards, there is always some effort made. And I would like to acknowledge that, but, you know, in, in that audit, you know, it did lead to, you know, sort of it being used against me, as I think was suggested. So, you know, I would like to acknowledge efforts made, and, and I plan to do that going forward, updating the language, so it is just efforts made, and then I can highlight those efforts in the actual recommendations, or, or lack of recommendations, right? And I'm willing to, do we want to, I think, if the council attorney was maybe...
I'm not making any recommendations.
Okay, okay.
I just, I wasn't clear in my mind.
Yeah.
I know they made it to change, but I didn't know whether it was unique to Safari or whether that was something that was intended. So my understanding is they're saying it's a case-by-case, and you're saying you're going to modify the language in general. Because as I spoke to the internal auditor, I mean, you know, clearly the, there was an effort made to take what I think is just perfunctory language that has generally been played, like we all do in a letter, thank you in advance for your cooperation. You know, lots of people put that in, in every letter they write. That doesn't mean that there's going to actually be future cooperation in this instance, that, you know, there wasn't, but it was used as quote-unquote evidence that the, that there was. So my understanding is the council's not, not making a change in this one, but that the auditor's going to revise her language and to try to avoid that in the future.
Exactly.
Should give credit where credit's due.
Yeah, and, and don't be contradictory. Say, oh, you're great. And then the next sentence, nope, you didn't cooperate.
Maybe more of a reality-based conclusion. Thank you, Bob. Any other discussion? All those in favor of 69, of Resolution 69-2025, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Chutel, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
This time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns.
Good morning. Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. First, I'd like to thank the council for the, for the revisions to the audit. I think they were appropriate. I do wish, however, that there had been an open work session. I firmly believe that the county executive should have been brought before the captain's mast and to have been asked some very specific questions. So why are we still talking about it a year later? I think the answer to that has become abundantly clear, that it took almost a year to get some of the information, including a financial statement. You can't do an audit, there was no conclusions. All we know is that this event lost the county a lot of the money. The event started off by failing to inform affected stakeholders in the neighborhood, not just Shadow Hills, that's not the only neighborhood that's within close proximity to the, to the quarry site. So there's an apparent violation of state law in that regard, for which the county executive has never been held accountable, and she should be. It's pretty clear that there was no due diligence done. Can you imagine putting on a complex event without doing your homework first? I've talked about this many times before. The contract itself was an absolute disaster. The county attorney admitted that they had reviewed the contract, but they didn't say if they approved it, and I fully believe that the county attorney is quite competent. I would have to, you know, reasonably assume that the advice was not to go with this contract, but the county executive and her hubris decided to move forward with it nonetheless. We know there are safety hazards out there that have never been addressed. The financial statement completely unsupported with verifiable, auditable information, which, as I commented several weeks ago, makes it absolutely worthless. We have no idea how much money was spent on this event. We saw the video a couple of weeks ago of the fill dirt, dirt being delivered to a dirt quarry, you know, rather interesting. We know there is about 30 cubic yards of dirt. That check means cost estimating guide, the going price for delivered dirt is, is about $350 to $385 per, per truckload. That's $10,000, more than $10,000 right there. You know, where'd that money go? I think the county executive owes the, owes the taxpayers an explanation for that. That was our money. She spent it foolishly and recklessly. So we're going to continue to talk about this. The county executive wants to bury it, wants it to go away. The underlying problem is, and as Councilman Holloway pointed out, that what the county executive did with Safari at the Quarry continues to manifest itself in many other ways. You know, take a look at the bio refinery, take a look at Wittipkin Park, and I know I'm out of time, but this is not going away, Madam Executive, and I'm going to look right into the camera and say that, because you will be ultimately held accountable. Thanks very much.
Mr. Goldberg?
Thank you. My name is Joe White from Wycomico County. I wanted to thank you all as a group to take the time with all the budget hearings that you had a couple of weeks ago. It was very informative. I was able to come for some and had to watch the rest on PAC 14. You know, I, there's a, there's a couple topics out there that really don't hit the community until it changes what's in their wallet, particularly with the, with the revenue cap. Speaking to many of you one-on-one, most of you are actually in favor of maintaining our revenue cap. We have, for the last six months, heard a lot of rhetoric from folks at the Greater Salisbury Committee, from our county executive about breaking the revenue cap, and there's a lot, there's some sentiment out there from some folks to, to remove it. I, I would just like to remind anyone who's in public office, whether you're a state's attorney, the sheriff, council, executive, whether you agree with them or not, you, you all have a fiduciary responsibility to uphold the charter, and I felt like the budget hearings last week did that. Spent some time with the, the show that I do on PAC 14, Open Agenda, reviewing just the Health Department building. And in that process, we had the Health Department, the Director of the Health Department, who's a wonderful human being by all accounts, a broker who was representing supposedly county interests. I know our attorney has reviewed it, our county executive, you all toured, or many of you toured the building. The information that comes out of that, if you go back to January of '23, when you had your very first meeting, work session, to when you were just having budget hearings and hearing that we needed to spend $2.75 million to renovate on the interior of this building, that's not fiduciary, responsible thing to do to the taxpayers, especially if we're talking about busting the revenue cap, just in the same budget season. And to Mr. Goldberg's point, one thing that I've heard many times is, especially from our county executive, it's a small group of people. It's a small group of people. To minimize any group, I don't live in Shadow Hills, I don't live on Atkins Road near the bio refinery, and I don't live in Wittipkin, but I live in an area that's actually being impacted by something else, which is the sanitary district, okay? No one from Parsonsburg, to my knowledge, is on the sanitary district committee. If you're talking about small people, because you don't think they're significant, then it only takes those people to get together. And I can tell you, I can promise you, that all the people that some of our elected officials thinks are small are actually getting together to do big things. Thank you.
White?
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I had not planned on using the word transparency today, but Councilman Holloway brought it up, so I want to talk about transparency. I want to thank the council president, the council administrator, and the executive office administrator. At the last council meeting, I questioned why the public only got a 50-page version of the budget, and the council got a 242-page version. Thanks to these people, after the finance department declined to post it, these three people and the council put it on the council website. Now, the majority of the people in this county, including myself, are not going to go through that 242-page item, page by page. But in a previous job I had, it was instilled in us that 80% of your problems are caused by 20% of the people. So if you apply that to the budget, 80% of the money you're spending is coming from 20% of the projects. One of the things besides the Health Department, which, as previously mentioned, is $2.75 million for interior designs, we've had the Health Department now for 15 months, 16 months. There's a proposal to spend $2.75 million to remodel it. Are there any plans? Are there any drawings? Has there been anything? The county's going to own that building November 31st. No more rent, it's your building. But the building's not ready to be moved into. So all the cost savings we were going to get from eliminating rent, eliminating parking, and all the other things are going to continue because there's no plans to get ready to move into that building. I don't expect the council to look at it now, but getting back to the 2080 dialogue, if you're bored some night and you want to look at the budget, look at the cell phone portion of the budget. You have departments in this government that are spending between $4,000 and $7,000 on cell phones. The county shouldn't be spending that amount of money on cell phones, let alone individual departments, and some of these departments have fewer than 10 people. So if you're spending $4,000 on cell phones, there's a problem somewhere. Thank you.
Seeing on council, council comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Bob.
I had asked President Cannon if I could have a few minutes to address a matter that came up last week.
Mr. Benson, can you pull your mic closer?
I had asked President Cannon if I could have a few minutes to address a matter that came up last week, and I wrote it. So I'm going to make what I think is an error, but I'm going to basically read the statement because I don't like to do that because I think it's less effective, but I wanted to be conservative at the time. "As the council is aware, the county executive found the time last week to write two multi-page letters criticizing two individuals that work for the council. I was the subject of the second letter. Last Wednesday, the executive sent a letter to council suggesting that I had used taxpayer-funded time for, quote, 'legally questionable and potentially unauthorized activity,' unquote." To put this in proper context, after council's meeting on April 15th... Last Wednesday, the executive sent a letter to council suggesting that I had used taxpayer-funded time for, quote, "legally questionable and potentially unauthorized activity," unquote. To put this in proper context, after council's meeting on April 15th, a councilperson asked to speak to council president Cannon and myself about a pending civil matter that had been filed against the councilperson. The councilperson believed that the civil matter involved activity that the councilperson had undertaken while acting in his legislative capacity, and he requested that I be permitted to look into the issue. It was agreed that I would review the matter and decide if I should do anything in my capacity as county attorney, as council attorney. Prior to the April 15th request, I was aware of some aspects of the civil complaint filed against the councilperson, as the councilperson and the person that filed the complaint had copied the council and me on a series of emails between the parties. In reviewing the emails, I determined that the emails that I had been copied on were on the councilperson's official email account and arguably involved actions taken in his legislative capacity. Under Maryland law, legislative immunity for local legislators has been upheld, and local legislators would include councilpersons. I recommended to council president Cannon that I be permitted to file a motion to intervene in the case involving the councilperson for the sole purpose of filing a short memorandum to make the court aware that legislative immunity had to be considered as part of the case involving the councilperson. I made the filing on behalf of the county council and not the individual councilperson. I did not represent the councilperson in the civil matter, whether I believe then and I believe now that the issue of legislative immunity is not one our local courts routinely encounter, and that it was appropriate to bring this novel issue to the court's attention. I believe my role as council attorney requires me to zealously represent the interest of the council, and to that end, I believe making a court aware of the issue of legislative immunity was appropriate. For council's benefit, I'd like to quote a portion of the memo that I submitted to the court to put this into proper context. That court recognized that legislative immunity applied to local legislators and stated, quote, "Local legislators constitute the most direct form of representative democracy. They are the closest to the people, and they often set the policies that most directly affect the health, safety, and quality of life of the persons and people residing in their communities. They must enjoy the same ability to speak and act in their legislative capacities without fear of retribution, either criminally or civilly, because of what they say or how they vote. They may be called upon to answer for the legislative conduct to the citizens who elected them, which is what democracy is about, but they may not be compelled to defend their legislative conduct to a prosecutor, to a grand jury, or to a court. I work for the county council. I submit my bills to the county council for its review and approval. In the time that I have represented the council, I have never billed for work that was not authorized and approved by the council. I do not work for the executive, and while I suppose I should be flattered that the executive apparently takes time out of her busy schedule to review my bills to see what the council has me working on, I do not submit my bills to the executive, and I do not ask the executive permission to undertake work assigned to me by the council. Lastly, my reason for asking to address this publicly is that in today's world, I have little doubt that the executive's letter will somehow become public, and I interpret the letter as suggesting that I did something unethical. I have managed to practice law for the better part of 40 years, and during that time, I've managed not to have allegations of unethical behavior made against me. Any suggestion that I did anything unethical in this instance is without merit, and I ask for this time to publicly address the allegations directly. I have a copy of the motion that I filed here, if any members of the council want to review it. I have a copy of the memo that I filed. I would just state that the purpose of filing the memo was simply to make the court aware that to the extent that the councilperson's activities as a councilperson were the subject of the civil action, the court had to take that into consideration. And I don't expect this to happen. I hope it does not happen again, but if another councilperson has a civil or criminal matter filed against them while I'm county council attorney, I would expect to file a similar memo in the court to make sure the court is aware that council members have legislative immunity for the activities they take while they're acting in their legislative capacity. I think that's appropriate. That's what was done in this situation, and I thank the council for allowing me to address it publicly. Thank you.
Well-stated.
Yes, Shannon.
Okay, I wrote this down, so I want to go on and on. I just wanted to thank St. James M. E. Zion Church for having the information from the Title Health and also the members of the community who shared their concerns about the new health facility. And as mentioned by Dr. Hall, having a healthy community is very important, and having access to these facilities is also important. It is important to communicate to the community for projects or developments that are coming to the neighborhood prior to their concerns. And I just made a list of things, of places they can share the information. PAC 14, Salisbury Independent, The Daily Times, The Watchmen, Ministerial Group, the Wycomico County NAACP, sororities, fraternities, bulletin boards, especially in senior centers, they have bulletin boards, they have meetings. Schools, you have PTA meetings. They also have bulletin boards. Civic organizations, and I included the VFWs and the American Legion's because they also have bulletin boards. So this is where I believe some of the communication can get out to people that want to know what's going on in their community, and we should make sure that some of these are being used. And I will suggest, you know, to developers or anybody that's coming in someone's neighborhood to use these texts, not only meeting with the community also. That's all I have to say.
Last week, we had a virtual call with the DNR about the state park coming to the West Side. As we've seen in the news, there's a lot of unanswered questions. Some of those questions were answered last week, and I appreciate the time. I think Councilwoman Hastings and President Cannon were on the call as well. Looks like it's going to be a historical park with some walking trails, not, no overnight accommodations, they're not going to be lined up at the gate, they don't anticipate a lot of traffic. But the important thing is, the conversation has now started. I think we wish it would have started sooner, but here we are, and looking forward to more information coming out. Also, last week, I had the honor to attend the graduation at the Warwick Community College, and we watched, I was there with President Cannon as well, and we watched 270 people come across the stage out of the 750 graduates, I believe was the total, including a young man who got the President Student Achievement Award, who actually graduated from college before he graduated from high school with a 4.0 GPA. I believe he graduates from Delmar High School next week. He's on his way to Georgetown, and what an impressive young man, and what a bright future he has. That was really special to see that. And piggybacking on Councilwoman Shields's comments about the meeting last night, Title Health, I commend them for coming out to the community and sharing information. Again, it was another situation where the residents were having something happen in their neighborhood, and they weren't sure what was going on. Lot of activity on social media, which is arguably not your best resource for credible But a lot of information was put out last night. It's a 12-acre parcel with a 20,000-square-foot building going up on it, and if you want to compare that with the site over on Naylor Street and Church Street, that's a 15,000-square-foot facility on two acres. So a little bit different, but same goal there, was to provide health care to a community that is in need of health care and not requiring them to go to the hospital, reducing ER visits, and hopefully healthier people. Also found out that that facility is going to create over 50 jobs. That wasn't mentioned last night. I found that out this morning. So that's another good thing, is job creation. And lastly, the Memorial Day ceremony is at the Civic Center this coming Monday at 10:00 a.m., so encourage everybody to come out and take part in that, where they honor the 191 military members who gave their life for our country, whose homes of record are Wycomico County. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Joe. Council comments. Joe?
Everything's good on the East Side, I think. I haven't had any major complaints in the past few days or weeks. I did want to mention on planning and zoning, we talked about that today. I've been on planning and zoning for the past two or three years, and we had the St. John's property come up, and this company's moving into Wycomico County with what they call flex buildings. It's going to be a great asset to the county for job creation. What's the company with the big warehouse?
Amazon.
Amazon. They're coming to Wycomico County. It's going to be, Jeff mentioned, more jobs at the Title Health facility. So things are happening out there. Hopefully, we can get the unemployment rate down even more. So that's all I have.
Thank you all for attending, and thanks for everyone who's listening. I do want to thank Mr. Benson for those great comments and for transparency. Really do appreciate that. The other things I just want to bring up, we had a big, the big storm that came through, obviously a lot of damage that came through that, and a lot of hard-working crews from the city Salisbury, the county, others trying to help fix a lot of the damage. Among that damage, there was the rail line that goes right along Route 13. We've had six outages, including the one at College Avenue, and so what that means is the gates and the lights are not coming down. So I appreciate all the folks who have been able to help spread the word to make sure that we're a little more cautious as the trains go through because they'll just go through at a slower rate. But obviously, that's a tough situation, especially there at College Avenue and Route 13, because you have the Salisbury University graduation is tomorrow, there's a lot of people in town coming through that. There's the, you know, obviously, it's a very short amount of time there to come off of US Highway onto that space, and then S.H.A. is doing their updates. So I jumped in when we found out there was an issue and just tried to make sure that everyone was aware and they were getting it addressed. They should have all of the, I talked to the rail folks this morning, they should have all of that addressed by closed business today for all six locations in our area. But, so yeah, please continue to spread the word for folks, make sure everyone's aware. And then the other things, I did get a call also that since we didn't have a District Three representative, I had an individual reach out and ask if I could help bring it up, but I know the council and county has been addressing the lighting along Bennett High School and all that, you know, that area that, obviously, there's a lot of development that's happening, not that, you know, within a stone's throw across the street, but he basically felt like there needs to be a lot more focus from the county side of that on putting up lighting to make sure that that can be addressed. And I know we've already been in that process. I don't know how all of that is going forward, but we at least wanted to make sure that that's brought up. And then last thing I'll say is, just hope everyone has a good Memorial Day week. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me? I don't have a whole lot to say, but I would say I've been hearing about the county park, Emerson, you're aware of that park? There's, I've been told that, and I've driven by where there's people hanging out and doing I don't know what going on, and so I had mentioned it to the council. I mentioned it to Laura, and then we relayed that to Parks and Rec. I'm sure it went to the sheriff, or I hope it did. But I was just told last night that they're still around the park, like, you know, I don't know what they're doing. It's a bunch of adults at a park hanging out. I'm not aware of the activities, but I just want the council to be aware of that because I don't, you know, if it continues and we're spending all this money at Indian, is it Indian? Indian River?
Indian Village.
Indian Village Park, you know, we're spending all this money at Indian Village Park, and this is right down the street, you know, we want kids to use these parks, right?
May I address that?
Yes.
These men are not in the park where children play. It's been addressed because people who come from work cannot get through, and I think that's a law enforcement problem, and some of the money from what the county executive said, the cannabis money, will be part of Emerson Holloway.
Okay.
Playground. And I think, once that gets started, those kind of things should be addressed, but I think that we have to contact law enforcement for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
Is that something that we can do? Reach out?
We did address it with the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. I know he said he was going to look into it, whether he'll address it with the sheriff's office or not, and I'm not certain, but I can touch base with him.
Yeah, the community is complaining about it.
Yeah, that's just a complaint that I had, and there's an old school out in San Domingo. You're aware of that school as well?
A national park, the only one in the nation.
Yeah, I don't know.
Roswell School.
Yeah, I was just, I talked to a lady that, I think she runs it. I don't want to mention her name.
I think I went to school with her.
You might have, but I guess she was under the assumption that the county was supposed to keep the grass cut there or something. I don't know. I would like to, just putting that on the radar, okay? But other than that, it's been a beautiful day, and I hope we have a nice rest of the day. That's it. That's it, John. Yep.
Under presidential comments, I would like to share similar to what Jeff said. I was very pleased that Department of Natural Resources did have a Zoom meeting for Wycomico County and for Eastern Shore delegation to try to explain the curiosities involving the Wettipkin as a state park for Wycomico County, because I think we've stated in this room more than once that no members here were aware of why this decision was made or how it came about until we read about it online. And we shared those concerns with Department of Natural Resources, and they seemed to listen, and I thought that was very productive. They, from what I understand, I believe that they were actually at one point in time escorted through Wycomico County. I'm not sure about the details of this, but they were, that's part of what their discovery was in that measure. So the details, I think, would have to be more specific, but I thought it was very positive in that they listened to us because we tried to explain to them what we had in Wycomico County, what we had to offer, especially in discussing Pemberton Park and the history of Pemberton Park and the easy access to Pemberton Park, and the fact that, you know, it has, it already has the buildings in place, the structures, it has access to the waterfront, it has trails, it has everything that they were addressing when they were talking about the location at Wettipkin. Only difference being, we didn't think the scenario of if you build it, they will come, or if you build the $4 million road to get there, they may come. We don't know yet, and I don't even know if they're aware, they were aware of those type of, like, I think, issues concerning public access. So again, it was very positive. I recommended that they talk to Steve Miller, because Steve has always been a great advocate for Wycomico County, and Steve is part of the reason that, you know, Pemberton Park is the way it is today, as successful as it is today. So again, we're not sure where this goes. You never know sometimes when you're dealing with elected officials, right? But it was positive, and we really appreciate them putting that forth. Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session followed by a closed work session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section 3-305 B8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position. Second?
Second.
Any discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. We're going to take a 10-minute recess before we get into the open work session, Mr. Wilber, if you don't mind. Convening in legislative open work, excuse me, an open work session with Wycomico County Council, legislative session 2025. Council, legislative session 2025-10 for May 20, 2025. First open work session we have is a process on filing an ethics complaint. Mr. Paul Wilber is here to help us with this.
Good afternoon.
Paul Wilber, county attorney.
Okay, so there's, the Ethics Commission has a set of rules, the procedural rules, and on filing a complaint, I'll just go through the process with you, we'll overview it. A written statement, which is under oath or affirmation, is filed alleging a violation. They must do it within one year of when the violation occurred. Once it's filed, it's filed with, under these rules, it was with the county attorney, but you've made a legislative adjustment since then. Where it will be reviewed, and then the attorney will speak with the Chair of the Ethics Commission and the other members, and they will gather in a meeting and review the complaint. And at that meeting, when they review the complaint, their options are to dismiss it, or to ask that it be amended, or to ask the attorney to investigate it. And depending on what their decision is, then the first person who filed the complaint, if it's that person and the person who is the subject of the complaint, if it's going to be dismissed, then they're both notified that it is dismissed. If it's going to be investigated, then they are both notified that it's going to be investigated. So the attorney investigates it, and then it comes back for another meeting of the Ethics Commission, where they can decide to dismiss it. That's their decision at that point. Or to ask the subject of the complaint to file a written answer to the complaint. So if that, if it goes that direction, then the written answer is filed, and then the Ethics Commission can meet again and just, you know, make a decision, or they can go into a hearing. And if it goes into a hearing, then that's, you know, this is all a confidential process. And it's the strict rules of evidence are not in play. It's more of an informal hearing, but each the complainant and the subject of the complaint can have an attorney, they can call witnesses, they can examine, direct examination, cross-examination. So it's like a mini trial, if you will, but on a more informal way. After they have that, then the Ethics Commission can again decide, do they want to find a violation of the Ethics Code or not? And if they do find a violation of the Ethics Code, then they can, you know, fine, they can, they can order that the person cease and desist. And if they, it goes that far, and there is a finding of an ethics violation, that can be a subject of judicial review. So while this whole process is going on, that the Ethics Commission can essentially negotiate an agreement with the party, it's the subject of the complaint, to cure a violation, if that's possible. So you could say there's a, an agreed mediation type of settlement that's an alternative that's available to this process. So that's the process in a general way. Any questions?
Let's see, we go back, conflicts. You know, if somebody can't judge and serve on it, okay, a member should not vote on a matter in which he has a conflict. What about a perceived conflict from the complainant? And here's where I'm going with. It's such a small, you know, even though we've got 100,000 people in the county, we're still a small county, I guess, and so many people know so many other people, and, you know. What if a person does have that perceived conflict with one of the members? Who is to judge whether that member should step aside or not?
The way I'd answer that is sort of like a, an attorney presenting to a judge that, should you recuse yourself? And a judge can say, yes, I will, or no, I won't.
What happens if they say, no, we're not going to excuse ourselves, and they find against the complainant, and so what's?
And then there's the potential for a judicial review, to send it over to Circuit Court and let a judge look at the process.
As, as we've seen lately with court cases, some involved in the county, or county personnel or whatever, being sent like the Somerset or Dorchester County.
Bless you.
Talking about court cases now?
Sure.
Okay. Has there ever been a, this is the word I want to use, where you have a situation in the county with a conflict of interest, and it says, we don't want to handle this because it's local, we'll send it to Worcester, Dorchester, or Somerset, for their, Ethics Commission to review it. Has that ever been done? Whether it's an independent group of people rather than somebody from this county?
Yeah, that.
And if there hasn't been done, can it be done?
I, that hasn't been done, to my knowledge, where you ask the Ethics Commission in another county to make a decision. No.
Would that have standing, being it's another county?
I think it should be all handled within Wycomico County in some fashion, as opposed to sending the matter to another county. Yeah, I understand the point you're making, which goes to the recusal if there's
Right.
a complaint about too close of a tie.
There's also media coverage sometimes on things.
Well,
You know, that.
The process should remain confidential until there is a decision.
It's not always the case, we know that.
Well, we do know that. But it should be a confidential, and then if, when there's a decision on a complaint, that can be public, but it needs to be redacted, particularly if it was a personnel issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
The titling of this work session is Process for Filing an Ethics Complaint. And under Section 5B, it says, if a person believes in an activity, conduct, or action violates the Ethics Code, the person should contact the county attorney to obtain an active complaint form.
Yeah.
Are the ethics complaint forms available online? And if they aren't, can they be, can't they be made available online?
They certainly could be made available, but I don't think that they are online.
I mean, I.
You know, that can be done.
It would just seem to me that if they're available online, it removes the county attorney from having to deal with it, but it also makes it easier for people to get to get the form. The downside, I guess, is it may encourage people to file more complaints. But I thought the complaint that I remember being made to the council during a public comment was that they had difficulty in determining how to get a complaint form. And if it's available online, then that's. I think a lot of it, though, is that we have to review the website itself and ask ourselves sort of objectively, was this really easy to get to or not? Because how it's been described to me is that it's a very convoluted process to finally get where you want to get, which isn't, of course, a legal issue at all. But Mr. Benson asked a good question. It's quite okay for us to, to make it available as a form for the public. It doesn't have to go through you to approve it as the county attorney. It will be eventually returned to the attorney representing the Ethics Commission.
Right.
So it will go to the legal process, but to, to get the form.
To get the form and to file a complaint, it's, then it's going to go to the attorney.
Okay, so we'll have to make it more readily available. We'll have to get IT to process PDFs that maybe are. I mean, the question is, can it be, can the form be, the complaint form be posted online? And I guess the secondary question is, is there a way for the form, the complaint form to be filed electronically as opposed by regular mail? Well, that's, yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was suggesting. Maybe IT can create an interactive PDF that allows them to fill it out right there and send it in, and then it would be directed to either the commission itself or to the attorney that the commission chooses to represent their, their group.
Yep. Yeah, it's, these rules can be changed to, you know, they were adopted many years ago, and they could be changed by the Ethics Commission to allow for electronic filing, yeah.
Is that something that the council would need to approve through resolution, Mr. Wilber, or how, what, how do we share that?
These rules, I think state law says that the Ethics Commission adopts rules of procedure. And we're working under state code. And these were, let's look, these were back in January 12th of 2016. It would be easy enough to look at resolutions to see if there was one. But I think, I think that Rachel Harris was working with the commission at that time, and I think they adopted these.
Okay, so.
Without any further resolution.
Which would be fine. I guess what we could do then, as early as we could issue a letter from the council to IT saying, you know, with certain requests, that it be a more available, more easy access on the website. Right now, you have to go through commissions, and there are things that can confuse basic.
Maybe something on the homepage, you know, the link to something on the homepage.
Exactly.
I mean, when you go to the homepage, I think you can go straight to the Ethics Commission. You have to go through commissions, and then when. I understand that, but I don't. You think it's accessible enough? To me, that's, it just should be, yeah, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not an expert at it, but I mean, I'm not having any problems getting to the Ethics Commission. Just seems to me, once you open the page for the Ethics Commission, there should be a spot on there where it says complaint form. It was, from what I understand, also, it's a rather, like, once you get to the site, it's very lengthy, and there's no sort of table of contents as to what you do or you need to go. Actually, I think they just should have a direct link saying, if you want to file a complaint, file it here, you know? I don't know how much more description there might be.
Yeah, that's, I think that's all doable.
So and the second part of it would be to, I guess, a letter from the council to the Ethics Commission, asking them to, to, if they are minimal, to create an online form that can, electronically to, I guess, maybe the commission chairperson or the commission, no, it'd have to go to.
I think it goes to the attorney, who then immediately contacts the Ethics.
Okay, so it would go to the commissioner's attorney, for him to disseminate that information to the commission, if he feels it's warranted. Anything else, Joe?
I just went through it. So you go to boards and commissions, and then Ethics Commission? That's how it goes right now? Yeah.
I have some. Is there alternates to this commission?
Yes, I think, I can't, I think there is one.
Yes, okay. Is there, then the county executive picks them, and then we approve them?
Yeah, it's an appoint, approve, point confirm.
Right, okay. So what happens if somebody files an ethics complaint, I guess, against one of the Ethics Committee members?
Okay. Obviously, that person would have to step out of the picture.
So the alternate.
At that point, then the alternate would come in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Is there a different method of doing this, so it seems more fair? Does it seem fair to everybody the way it's being done?
I think the problem was confusion over access, and then knowing what to do once you got it. I think we had a direct link to the forum stating, this is the form you fill out. That might help them, because really, they just wanted a one, one step process that they could, you know, resolve their concerns. And there may be changes after that, but I think if we try to get, to make these, take these steps right now, at least it'd go a long way.
So we need more of a fast food type delivery on us than?
More user-friendly.
Yeah, yeah.
It's doable, yeah.
Do you want to make a point to come back to this in a year? Just see how the process is working?
Well, if you remember that, a year, yeah. No, I think we'll just, we'll take what steps we need to do, and then I'm sure we'll get feedback if there's an issue or concern. Or if, six months from now, we can revisit it. Josh?
Just as a side note, Mr. Wilber, the ethics, the, what do you call it, the financial disclosure form that all of us have to fill out is, really needs to be updated. Like a lot of the dropdowns are outdated, doesn't have, you can't pick the right year, and then you enter things and it changes up. So it, just as a side note, we do need to fix the financial disclosure form, too, as we're talking about all this.
I think a lot of that originates from the state.
Yeah, as long as the PDF itself is not quite operational.
Okay, all right. I talked to John Monar about that. Yeah.
Excuse me, I do have one thing. You had mentioned, you know, with having that complaint form online, the number of complaints that may start coming in. And Paul, you mentioned the final decisions being posted online. I don't think they're currently posted online, but I think that that could help control the number of complaints, if people can see, you know, what has been decided in the past, so that way you're not filing duplicate complaints, or it might control the number that come in, if they could see some of the decisions that have been made in the past.
The way I read these rules, if it's just dismissed, that's just, it's not online, okay? It just is dismissed. The Ethics Commission says, end of it. It's only if the complaint goes through hearing to a decision, then it can go up online.
If it's just dismissed, what options do the people have?
That's, I guess they could, they could theoretically, if they wanted to, go to Circuit Court and say, the Ethics Commission shouldn't have dismissed it, you know?
There's no review of the Ethics Commission's decision before going to court?
That's correct.
That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
That's correct.
Should there be? Is there, is there a, somebody else that does that?
No, I mean, to my knowledge, the Ethics Commissions are appointed, they make their decisions, and Circuit Court is your review body. And of course, that's expensive to go that way.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Wilber?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Next item on the agenda is an update on roadside litter efforts. You can state your name and positions just for the record and for the public. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Albarro, Recycling Coordinator for Wycomico County.
Good afternoon. Mike Swabe, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Michael. We'll let you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody a good afternoon, and hopefully, we can enjoy the rest of the beautiful day. And thank you for inviting us both here to talk to you about what's happening with roadside litter and have a chance to work together. Today, I'd like to share with you a prospective litter control program plan that Jennifer and I have devised, with the conceptual commitment from the administration. The program can be managed and coordinated out of the Roads Division instead of the Solid Waste Division. The change was driven by the landfill's need to reconsider and refocus on their core business, which is landfill operations. In addition, the ideology for roads to assume the management of this program is that roadside litter is truly a challenge associated with the safety and appearance and keeping a clean and safe transportation network to the residents of the county. So the program that we're contemplating would have three parts to it: education, enforcement, and collection. The first part, education, you're all aware of the extent to which Ms. Albarro strives to be present in the community. She will continue this effort, supplementing it further with the following framework. We'll begin working more closely with Park and Rec to coordinate parks cleanups. We will maintain a booth presence at selected civic center and other public events. We'll continue to work with Wycomico Clean by educating and recruiting for cleanups from environmental groups, scouts, and church groups. A newer dimension will be sought by adding competitive events, such as litter collection challenges, No Trash Day, school-driven community cleanup days, possibly even giving public recognition and nominal awards to those who accept. public recognition and nominal awards to those who excel. Element two, the enforcement piece. Earlier today, there was a chance we were going to have to delay our chance to speak with you all, because Jennifer was summoned to court to support prosecution for a litter offense, and I'll defer to her at some point here to share with that what happened. We will share a list of commonly littered location alignments with law enforcement. We'll explore trail cameras for the hotspots. We'll even add the presence of law enforcement to our presentations in schools to underscore the seriousness of the cause. Lastly, under enforcement, we are geocoding the location of all roadside signs owned by the county as part of our pavement evaluation. We'll review litter prevention signage and roll out new artwork that is eye-catching and up-to-date in terms of both Maryland and county codes. Last element, collection. I'm going to start by saying, heroic are the people of Wycomico Clean. As we've mentioned multiple times in the past, litter mitigation is becoming more demanding of human coordination and actual pickup. In order to ramp up the scale of human effort to compete with the outcomes of human behavior, we're adding two additional pipelines of resources to the program. The first, through a coordinated effort through the state's attorney, chief prosecutor, and district court officials, defendants that receive a stat agreement in district court, or those that are formally committed to the misdemeanor offender program, will routinely be given sentences involving hours of community services. These defendants will be assigned litter alignments for cleanup, provided with PPE and materials required to meet time commitments cleaning up roadside litter. The second element of collection, a new crew of inmates will be hired from ECI, similar to the landfill, except this group will have ECI supervision. They will be assigned to collect roadside litter two days a week. This effort will be executed by the Public Roads, sorry, by the Public Works Roads Division. The following needs are required to set this program up, and they're, they're cost-neutral by and large. First, we need to transfer assets from the landfill to the Roads Division in terms of equipment and a vehicle, and I think there's a pathway for us to do that in compliance with the charter. Second, portions of the supply budget needed to, to purchase PPE, trash bags, gloves, pickers, et cetera, will be moved from the landfill to Roads. And third, the two equivalent positions, those filled by Jennifer and her assistant, Mr. Brian Warren, will be moved from the employee roster at the landfill to the roster at Roads. And finally, the most critical element necessary to launch the incremental cleanup is adding another inmate crew deployed from ECI. You're probably intimately familiar with the fact that inmate labor at the landfill is a critical part of their business model, and it will be for this, too. But because this is a group that we don't want to have to supervise with county personnel, we're going to have to add the mention of supervision from ECI. So, if we launch a program where there's two pickup days a week, two eight-hour days, and these six inmates are, are supervised by someone with authority from Corrections, the cost of that is approximately $50,000 a year. The program launch target as of now is October 1st, and the reason we're delaying it for the first quarter is to give the landfill an additional quarter's worth of time to reassign some of the remaining duties that Ms. Albarro has as part of being recycling coordinator there. So, once October 1st rolls around, we'll be starting the second quarter, and it'll allow for the full transition to the Roads Division for this program. So, if you de-annualize that $50,000 number, now it's $33,000. I know that, you know, there's some remaining shoes to fall, so to speak, with the FY '26 budget and operating in capital. So, I simply request that in your deliberations, you remain mindful of this need. I think it's definitely a step that needs to be taken. It has the benefits over hiring additional people and dedicating them to this, to this role as an employee, where, you know, we won't have to pay for a pension, we can discontinue the program when and if we need to. We can call weather days if we find a special circumstance where we need to suddenly deploy people that we didn't plan. ECI will cooperate with that. It's all reduced to an MOU document. So, that's the program that we are contemplating right now, and as I mentioned earlier, we, we talked to the administration about it, they're good with that. And, you know, we're happy to hear feedback, answer questions, and, and, but before we do, I'd like, Jennifer, if you could, to detail a little bit more about how this morning went, and the type of, the reason you were there to begin with.
So, this morning, I did have court, in district court, there, we had a gentleman who was routinely scavenging our trash and scrap metal bins, and even the recycling bins in Byvalve, to the point where the one day that I went up there to check our cameras, in a four-hour timeframe, he had come through three different times. And he had a young man with him in the, in times past, who was about 10 years old, that he was literally, you know, letting, lifting him into bins to retrieve stuff. So, it was a real concern. Our staff had tried talking to him multiple times. Unfortunately, he got very hostile very quick, so we did enlist the help of the Sheriff's Department, and we did trespass him at our outline convenience center. So, today, in court, he is only allowed to use the Brick Hill Road Convenience Center. He is not allowed to use any of the outline recycling centers, and he was put on a three-year stat docket. So, within that three-year timeframe, if he does anything to get himself in trouble, we can revisit those charges.
Maybe they'll put him picking up trash along the road.
They did not do that, because he would probably take it all home and keep it.
And, and actually, that part of the program's not yet set up. We're, we're still trying to work through some of those details, but there, there's a lot of cooperation from the state's attorney office.
So, and we have, on Friday, we were called out. Roads was made aware of a dump, several, about six or seven locations on Bear Swamp Road, where it was bad. We picked up, Roads picked up 1,700 pounds of garbage.
Hmm.
So, it was, it was continuous, the Sheriff's Department is involved, they have talked to, there was mail in all of it. So, they have talked to the folks that, that it came from their house, and we'll move forward with that. So, we are, you know, slowly but surely, you know, taking more people into court over roadside trash, and we'll continue to do that, but it will take a village. It will take, you know, the state's attorney's office, it will take the code enforcement, because there are properties where, like, this is in the city of Salisbury, but the cookout is continuously a mess. Jeff, Meredith, and John, I'm sure you are well aware. So, it, those properties need to be, they need to be cited or talked to about, you know, cleaning up their own properties, because, you know, Wycomico Clean is, is doing a lot of legwork on that. So, aside from that, parks and recs, Roads, the landfill, it's, it's going to take a lot of different entities working together to do this. This is not a one-man band at all, so.
Is that something that, that has to be done at the city level to implement some, something that, where they have to keep their parking lots clean?
Well, this, I, I'm, I'm not a code enforcement person, but I'm sure there is some sort of regulations out there that say they, you know, they need to empty their trash cans when they're overflowing and keep their property neat and nice. I mean, it, it, it's a no-brainer if you want to keep the public coming to the property.
Never mind, because the cities, I've seen the city trash cans, they're overflowing, too.
Yeah, the city has, you know, that's, that's the other side of the coin, is the city has asked us to help them with varying things, and, and, you know, we're trying to divide it up, the county, to try and stick with the county. We do, you know, overlap, we'll pick up stuff on Emerson Avenue that's clearly in the city, but, you know, we try to be as responsive as we can to the public particularly, and, you know, get out there and clean stuff up. With Roads, with their additional help, we have the knuckle boom available, so Brian and I are not young people at all, we're not, you know, we're not the, going to be able to throw couches and tires forever into the back of a trailer. So, that is one thing we would like to look into, is getting a hydraulic dump trailer, because presently, we're using a trailer that we literally put the trash in and take it back out again, so.
Have a hydraulic dump trailer.
At the landfill, no.
You do it Roads.
They do it Roads, but not at the landfill, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's the little things that can make a big difference for us.
Yeah, take that grade off, buy a.
Buy five trailers.
Buy a truck and a trailer, yeah, that would be wonderful. But yes, the knuckle boom is a big, big, huge help. That helps with the heavy equipment, so we're not killing ourselves, because, like I said, we are not young people, none of us. And we are hoping, you know, with the people from the courts, typically in the past, they've always come on a Saturday or Sunday, which is fine, but we have a skeleton crew typically on those days. So, you know, if we can work with them to try and get people at the landfill or able to do cleanups, you know, on a schedule where we're not having to, you know, have everybody working weekends, is ideal as well, so. So, yeah, it's, it's an ongoing process. We are going to hit some, try and get some trail cams out at some hotspots, so we can, you know, prevent some of it, and, you know, we often hear the complaint that, you know, it's, it's a money thing, and it is to a degree. When you see tires and refrigerators, it's because there's a fee involved. But you also see on Sundays, when the scales are not open, people are dumping routinely around the landfill. So, I'm sure they're pulling up, not realizing the scales are not open, and they're throwing their tires on the side of the road. We can't stop that. We can't have the scales open 24 hours. So, no matter what, there's always going to be roadside trash, that's, that's a given. But we're going to make every effort humanly possible to, you know, make the county a cleaner place.
I've said this for a long time, that the pit road, the cleanup along the road should be on the Roads Department, not the landfill. I've always thought that should be a, a job for the Roads Department, and I'm glad to see you moving in that direction. Said you need a van, do you have one, or do you have to buy a new one?
We, we have a, we have a 2007 van, that has about $140,000 on it, and we have the trailer, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll probably make use of the van as long as we can, and then we're going to, we're going to, when Jennifer comes over to Roads, they're going to be given one of the hydraulic trailers we have. But next budget go-around, we might have some requests for some, you know, some newer equipment, nothing sophisticated or, or really expensive, just replacement kind of stuff. And really, the, the biggest concern, and I, you know, we're not in a position or, or a time sequence here, I'm sure, to discuss it, but, you know, to hire that crew from Corrections, it couldn't be a better price. I mean, the two-thirds of that number is the actual supervision, and there's really no other way to do that work than to have Corrections out there supervising it, contrasting to how it's done at the landfill. The labor rates are identical for the inmates as they are at the landfill. The only caveat is, I, I was cautioned by ECI that they are reviewing those rates. They haven't been changed since 2022, I think it is, and so, with '26, new rates may come out there, maybe they'll go from, you know, $3 a day to $4 a day.
So, you'll be, you'll be using inmates from our detention center, too, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Now, who's going to drive the van? Is it going to be a correction officer or somebody from Roads? Years past, I thought, I always thought it was a correctional officer, because he's got authority over these inmates.
Yes, it, it is. So, so, the transportation, and they, they call it a vehicle recovery fee, that's all wrapped into the rate of, I think it's $408 a day. So, it'll be a Corrections van, a Corrections supervisor, and six inmates. They'll drive them to the site we identify, they'll supervise the work, and they'll drive them home.
Okay, all right.
And the van that I was alluding to earlier, that's what Jennifer uses right now to go around and pick up bags, or, you know, but.
What about the ECI inmates? Is that the same?
That, that is, that's it.
Now, I thought you were talking about the detention center.
Oh, I'm sorry, the ECI inmates.
What about the one that's from the detention center?
I actually haven't explored that.
So, we're not using inmates from our detention center?
Well, in the past, it was my understanding, they didn't have enough staff, and that was a big reason after, well, and of course, the, the financial end of it, because it was, it was less expensive for them to send inmates home with the ankle bracelet, so we could, we can certainly explore it with them, but I.
Yeah, for sure.
So, all you've been talking about, I guess, is ECI?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I, I, we will look into that other avenue as well.
The other thing is, the tall grass along the road? It's hard to pick up trash when you have tall grass along the road. And then when you cut the grass, you can see the trash better. So, it creates, if you leave the grass up, you can't see the trash, but anyway, so that's something that's got to be.
Well, we'd like to beat the bowers, if that's possible, because it does make it easier when you're cleaning up one piece of plastic instead of 100, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, but if the grass is so tall, you can't, I mean, I got grass.
Trust me, we're used to it, it's, it's not that.
You guys got bug spray?
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah, I think Joe makes a really good point. I'd, I'd love to see, trying to see what Corrections could do with this, instead of having to go to ECI on it.
Okay.
And it would, it would help, you know, I mean, I'd rather transfer the money to another county department than to send it to the state of Maryland.
Got you, okay.
Or both, anyway, at least.
And, and maybe, maybe their policies on, on ankle bracelets, they need to back off of that. I mean, that was a COVID thing, and it really did create an issue. Maybe they need to back off on it, I, I don't know, I'll leave it up to them, but I think, I mean, I love what you guys, what you guys are doing, this is fantastic, very comprehensive, too. And I think the council has no problem trying to support whatever efforts you want to make. I guess we'll have to change your organizational chart with Ms. Albarro's position going into Roads, the whole process.
Yes.
I think that's fantastic, and that's an easy thing to do. The funding, I believe, I don't, I'm not concerned whether we do it as a transfer from 2025 or a late transfer in '26. I doubt we have the time to actually implement it into the fiscal year '26 budget, since we're closing that process, but not that, I want to suggest that immediately afterwards, we begin doing transfers, but I think with the highest, you know, importance that we have of this, that whether we do a, a budget transfer now, or we do one on July 10th, that I think the council is ready to, to make that commitment right away to.
Great, thank you.
What you're suggesting. And put the, the dump truck lift in there as well.
Dump trailer?
Dump trailer, put that in there as well.
Thank you all. The, the amount of progress that has been made in 12 months in cleaning up the county has, has been remarkable, thanks to your efforts, so.
Well, and especially all of you, all of you that have helped, the citizens of Wycomico County, we know there's some Bruce and Mark and Jerry and Craig, there are some, Michelle, people that are constantly out there doing it, and they, they are the true heroes, they're really doing a great job.
I, I think right now, we have more groups than we can shake a stick at, helping us do all this, and it's, it's great, we appreciate it. How are we, how are we determining what the city does and the county does, we're not going to be doing in the city?
Well, we, I try, I, I'm going to ask for a better map of the boundaries of the city, because they are very convoluted, and yes, they're, they're hard to determine what's what. So, if it's very obviously in the city, I'll let the green team know, and there's a gentleman named Zach White, who's a part-time employee, who is handling their cleanups. So, so, yeah, we're, we're trying to divide the, the work up as best we can.
Good, Josh. Just add to that, the green team does go into the county, too. They've actually, I worked for years, my wife ran it for a couple of years, and so, I, I love that partnership. I, I just also want to say, two things. First of all, acknowledge the, you know, the, I want to acknowledge the situation, obviously, the reason why we have so much trash around that Route 13, around the cookout, is because their business model is built on trash, that's, and that they take advantage of us, that's, that's their thing. So, the more that we don't have businesses like that, the better, but regardless, and I acknowledge, by the way, our local restaurants don't do that. They actually pay somebody to wash a dish and to put that dish back and to reuse it. So, I think that's just important, important to acknowledge. Also acknowledging the fact that we have a, you know, I'm assuming it's a father and a son with a, you know, trying to go and get medals to sell, you know, we're, we're, this is a sad state of affairs for folks, that that's where we're at in, in all of the United States, or in, in our, in our economic situation. That is another thing I acknowledge. But last thing I just want to say is, I don't know if there's any other further technology that you could have, you know, that we have, you mentioned the trail cameras for dumping, it'd be nice if there were, you know, we have speeding cameras, it'd be nice if we had some sort of cameras like that, that you could actually have, that you could catch somebody, you know, dumping or this, and, and I, I don't know what that looks like, if maybe a trail camera would do that, but something along those lines would be, I think, helpful. And then, and then last thing, just making sure that we're sitting down with, with the folks, what you all mentioned there, and reviewing this plan with them to get any kind of further insight. I think you all, this is really fantastic, you've done a great job laying this out, this looks really awesome, and I hope, I mean, I think, we said this was like eight. And I hope, I mean, I think, we said this was like eight, eight months ago or so, we were talking about making Wycomico known for being the cleanest, or the, you know, that we were focusing on cleanliness and clean, you know, area more than anyone else, more than any other county. And I think this is the kind of thing that would get us statewide attention for our efforts to do so. And so I just want to commend you on that, too, and make sure that we're bringing in our partners and getting their insight.
I think what we could do possibly is meet with you quarterly. We could schedule that, meet with you quarterly. At least while we're in the, you know, initial steps, initial process. Maybe the next time, if you want to bring someone from law enforcement with you, someone from the sheriff's office with you to give us an update on, on that aspect of it, and we can move forward there. And again, Wycomico Clean has been just the leading force behind all this with Mark Engberg and Bruce Robson. And they have really just, they're, they've changed, I think, Wycomico's perspective of what our, what our, what our goals should be when it comes to litter and paying more attention to the, the environment and the aesthetics of Wycomico County. So. Any, any other comments? Thank you all very much. Great, excellent presentation. Very good. We appreciate it. This time, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn from open work session to go into closed work session, whereas we will reconvene in open work session to finish with the capital improvement plan. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we reconvene as Wycomico County Council for May 20th, 2025. First item on the open works, or the last item on the open work session is the capital improvement program, trying to finalize the details.
Pam Olin, Finance Director, sent to Laura a list of the changes from the submitted CIP to what is proposed in the capital budget. I don't know if you want me to run down those. In addition, council, in our discussions, talked about removing the bonding for the Verizon building. So with that proposal, the executive then is proposing to move two items from Pago to bond to allow for the potential, if we get, if when, not, if when we get quotes for the Verizon building, we have some Pago space available to do that. So I can answer any questions about the list. It is only changing the 26 column because that's the column that is in the budget.
Very quick on that one. I understand that that is what's most important today. But when you talk about adding an airport hangar for mechanic school to state grant, and it's 1.5, should we responsibly have some type of what a commitment is?
I don't know what the next.
In the out years?
Yeah, I don't know the out years at this moment. So I, I don't have that answer. So, and I don't know how long the plan will take and that kind of thing. So I can't tell you if it's going to be 27, 28, if we'll go to the state again and ask for more money in '27, '28. I mean, I can, I can throw a dart and put a number there and then say, to be determined as to where it's coming from, but I don't even know where it's coming from yet. I don't know what year it's in. I don't have any of those answers.
If the real question would be, I'll restate it. Should we not have some idea of what the total cost of the project is so that when we, we make this commitment in '26 of 1.5 million with the state, that we know that in the out years, there's another 3 million additional that's going to be obligated?
Again, the intention is, is to go to the state to help pay for this because again, it's a, a state program run out of state, state school. And so, and again, not knowing what year this would be done in. I don't know when the plans would be done, if the plans would get done, because again, depending on the state process for funding, sometime, I, I'll be honest, I can't remember if this comes through as a bond bill or through another mechanism with the state. And bond bill money is not available typically until October, November. So then you've got time to, then you have to bid it out, then you have to award it, then you have to actually design it. So again, I don't know if it's a '27 number. I don't know if it's a '28 number. I mean, we could add.
The 1.5 is a '26 number, right?
Correct.
It's from the state, right?
Yes.
So when the state commits to $1.5 million, doesn't the state say, hmm, this is a $50 million project? We're going to commit 1.5, we're going to commit 10. Doesn't that 1.5, isn't that designated as a portion of a larger sum?
It's not stated in their thing, in their, that I'm aware of.
I don't remember if this is a bond bill versus being just a governor's capital budget.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's differences there.
There's differences there. There's timing differences. There's requirement differences as to how you access the money. And I'll be honest, I don't remember.
Jeff, you have a question?
I'm, I'm looking forward on here.
Okay. Any questions, somebody? We appreciate you preparing the list. Pam makes life a lot easier, by the way.
Just, oh, sorry, Ms. Olin, if you don't mind, I was trying to explain the Furtland primary situation again. Can you just tell me, like, is there a 15, 20 second version of this, just so I make sure I got it right?
So the 15, 20 second version of it, the state is originally, if I remember correctly, and I'll let me pull up my sheet so I don't state it wrong. But I believe, I think I go to the right page. There's so many pages. So originally, the state was only going to give us $5.9 million in fiscal '26. So that number has jumped to $12 million. Having worked with the Board of Education and their, primarily Leesel Ashby. I, sorry, that came out, her last name came out wrong. But working with her on their cash flow needs, they will not need any cash flow from us based on this $12 million and the money that we've already put in until fiscal '27. So at this point in time, instead of going to the bond market or any of that, and then have this money sitting there and us incur costs for it, with, with the, through discussion with the Board of Education, they're well aware that we're pulling these two off the table at this moment. Now, there is a good possibility that we could need cash early in the fiscal year. So we may have to do some Pago funding to get them through. And/or we have the ability, if we write it into our bonds, where we can get reimbursed for funds that we have put out the door before we close on bonds. So depending on those conversations and what number the state is going to provide next year, and this is longer than 20 seconds, we, we may have to put some cash out the door, July, August, September timeframe. We, having had further conversations before we ended up having to issue this, we have ways of going to, not quite the market, but going for that forward funding. We, we don't really want to do a geo-bond for the forward funding because we want to get paid back for that quicker than we're going to pay off that debt. So we're looking at other financing mechanisms with discussions with Davenport and Lindsay-Rader at Funk and Bolton. And those could potentially close in, probably August would be the earliest timeframe, August, September, that we could close on those and then do our standard bonding in November, closing, end of October, beginning in November. So again, these numbers have been discussed with the Board of Education. They're comfortable with the fact that we have removed this funding. And they're well, and we're well aware, and they're well aware, that we're going to have to, you know, do something early in the fiscal year for '27. Actually, one of the things that we want to bring to council probably early in fiscal '26 is the MOU that lays out the forward funding repayment mechanism and all that kind of stuff. So that's off the plate before we ever even get into next year's budget discussions. Yep. Well, longer than 20 seconds.
You have increasing with the engineering Sharp Point Wetland Mitigation Pago. You have seven and a half million, but we already funded what?
Yes, and that, this is the seven and a half million dollars that we talked about in that conversation, that this, the first money is money for hiring a company, which is what we did. And we're in the process, I don't know where in the process of getting that signed and getting that started. I, I don't have that answer. But we still have the remaining 300,000. So we have to get out 400,000 cubic yards. We are doing 100,000 with this vendor. So the seven and a half million dollars is to either rebid the additional 300,000, rebid portion of the 300,000, you know, do some stuff ourselves, but we're going to have costs associated with that. We're going to potentially have to buy wetland mitigation, depending on where we want to put all of this stuff. So we, the, the seven and a half million dollars is our estimate for the remaining 300,000 based on the 100,000 that we already did.
Say, depending on where, what we do with all this stuff, I thought this was our, that the figure that we, of 7.5 was specifically because we knew we had to take these soils and transfer them to the landfill.
Well, but it, the question becomes is an, I, I, is that there's, landfill is a portion of it. There's some moving to Eden at the moment. That's where the first set is going. If we have to find, if, I mean, 300,000 cubic yards is a lot of, a lot of material. If we don't use the material quick enough, could we have to find another spoil site? There's that potential. We don't, some of the spoil sites that we have located that we may have to put it on are current wetlands. And as such, you have to buy wetland credits, which we've done before.
Another 10 million.
Yeah. So again, we did that for the airport. We had to buy wetland credits to be able to extend the runway, if I remember correctly. So the seven and a half million dollars we're putting in there is to do a combination, a potential combination of things to remove the remaining 300,000 cubic yards.
You first came to us asking for seven and a half, and then we did what?
Two, sorry, two and a.
Two and a half.
So I wrote.
Wait a minute, we've done, we've done the two and a half, and now you want another seven and a half.
So.
Where's the end of this?
There's never going, we are going to have to do dredging now every year. So we got behind.
Before we make any decisions on this, I'd like to hear from the Water Transportation Committee. That's somebody we've not heard from.
They're going to tell you, you have to do it.
Well, we know, but I mean, they know about where the soils need to go, how much soils we're going to have. We've not included them in this, any of this conversation. Don't you think it'd be wise to hear from them?
I'm not familiar with what, what they, what they bring to the table as far as soil uses of the soils. I mean, they just want to make sure that the river is dredged.
If I, if I may finish, the, so you asked, we came to you with, we, we wrote the resolution at seven and a half million dollars because we didn't yet have the bids in the door. And so we wrote it at seven and a half million dollars, thinking that was our best estimate as to what it was. Those bids came in the door at two something for the first 100, and then it was going to be like 11 something for the remaining three. And that's why we, at the table, said, we, we gotten, we agreed with the contractor that they would just do the first 100 at 2.3 million dollars or 2.5. I'm sorry, I can't remember that number off the top of my head. It's in that range. So we amended on the floor that number because we had to advertise a public hearing for a budget amendment, for a capital budget amendment, and we needed the top dollar amount that we thought it was going to be. Well, it turns out, the bid came in like double the number that we thought it was going to be for 400,000 cubic yards. But their first 100,000, we didn't feel was out of the realm of possibility. That's why we came to you for the first 100,000 and reduced that seven and a half million dollars. We still feel that we can accomplish the remaining $300,000 for, or 300,000 cubic yards at a level of about seven and a half million dollars versus what was bid.
How about the money we've been putting in every year?
And that was the 1.2, I think, that's remaining in there. So between the seven and a half and the 1.2, we feel we can accomplish the $300,000 or 300,000. I keep saying dollars. I'm, I'm an accountant. I say, I say, I say dollars for everything.
Budget transfer for buying two new dump trucks, and that was stated to be moving the soil. And I know that's just a spoonful. Why are we buying two new dump trucks to move the soil, the soil site when we're hiring contractors?
Because we still have 300,000 to move.
Yeah, but at least your dump trucks ain't going to move. You're buying.
We're buying two new dump trucks to help with that process. We also have a very old fleet. The fleet that we have been very successful in bringing up to date is our vehicle, sheriff's vehicle, light pickup trucks, even heavy duty pickup trucks. Those things that, you know, you and I buy and have on the road. Where we have not kept up with our fleet is in the more heavy equipment. And so we're asking for two new dump trucks to allow, or not asking, we are letting you know that we have located the funding for two new dump trucks for the Roads Division to help modernize the fleet that we have.
Who is compiling all these figures for moving the dirt and how much dirt's there, and who needs to, how much to move it and all that? Who does that? I know you probably don't.
It's, I believe Heather in Public Works is one of the main, and then I think it's Mike is the second person.
Pam, in, in the CIP on page 18, this is listed at $4.1 million, and we're increasing it to 7.5? Or we're increasing it by 7.5?
No, to 7.5.
To 7.5, okay.
Yeah, so the new, the number, if you look at the capital budget page in the actual budget, it says seven and a half million dollars.
Okay.
So what I attempted to do, it makes perfect logical sense to me. This column that says final amount, that's the ending number that I'm looking to. So I, I tried to say that this is what we're doing, and we're going to, this number is your final number. So like, we're removing the emergency service radio dispatch consulate. So that final amount in the CIP, it had $135,000. It's now going to zero. In the CIP, we didn't have anything for the Pittsfield Tower. It's going to 1,050. That was what, that's how my mathematical brain worked. So.
Any other questions from anybody here in reference to any of that part of it?
On Sharp's point, are we going to something else? I got, I got a couple more questions, but not on Sharp's point. The Civic Center elevator for 1.1 million dollars, do we have, is that a credible number? I think.
That's a, that's a current estimate as what we have. I mean, the best estimate. Again, we can't, certain things, and I, I can't remember if this is one or not, but certain things, we can't go to a contractor and have them give us an estimate for our CIP because then they become precluded from being able to bid. So we have to, with knowledge that we have and discussions that we have, we can do some informal discussions, but we can't have anybody give us a, a actual written quote for anything in our CIP unless we're under contract with them for a specific, so like, I know we are under contract with a company, I believe, for HVAC. So we can go to the HVAC guy and get an estimate for what that's going to cost because we're under contract with them. But we can't go to an elevator vendor if they're not under contract. And I, as I said, I can't remember if they are or not. But we can't go to them and say, hey, what's it going to cost us to, to do this? We've identified a location for this. We've identified. We've identified that there's, there is a little bit of structural work, but most of it is really just installing, because actually, we're looking at putting it primarily, and I believe the loading dock is the current location in the Civic Center. And so you've, you don't have a whole lot of roof or ceiling or anything, or floors to go through. We're looking to like, kind of just attach it to the floor that is already there and open doorways.
Yep. I think the, the intent is for it to be a freight elevator.
Yeah.
So that it's not.
And, and the location is perfect for that, because it's back where we take in all of our, our stuff as well. And those, that end of the facility is primarily not used by the public.
Okay. I got one more on page 20. This 1.75 million dollars for Baron Creek Road and FY '27. It seems in nine years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on surveys and, I don't, I don't think we're any closer now than we were nine years ago. I think, didn't we just recently spend 100,000 on getting it resuraveled again?
I don't know about the survey. I know we spent some money in the last year or so to buy stabilization material. And this is, is not a 26 item. It's a, it's a 27.
27. What, I know, but I'm just questioning why it's even in there, because it's, I think they were out there in the past couple months doing surveys again, and we've not heard anything about a plan.
And that's part of why it's not in 26, because we're not ready for 26 for it to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't even know why you have it in 27.
Yeah.
Because there's nothing after that. This is similar to what I was asking you before on the other issue on the, what the heck was it, I don't know, five minutes ago? Is that we don't see any out years. And all we've done, I guess maybe to please the people who sent in the letters, we said, all right, well, we'll drop in 1.75, you know, 1.75 million dollars in 2027, so everybody's, you know, happy. But what's being left unsaid is, you're not going to redo Baron Creek for 1.750. So why are you even suggesting 1.75 at all if there's nothing in the out years at all? I don't get it.
My, my understanding, again, I am not the engineer, my understanding is, is that this, these funds would, with the funds that we have remaining from the original, I believe it was debt issuance, have the ability to do something. And I don't, I, I, again, I'm the finance person. I took the language that they provided me. This is my understanding of the project. And it is a, there are two sides to whether or not Baron Creek should be reopened. I am, I, I am, in this instant, I was asked to put this number in here, so I put this number in here.
Yeah.
So I, I am, it is in here, it is not in the year that we are funding at the moment. Will we be ready for 27? I can't answer that question.
What I know about the bridges in the state is, from what I've learned, is in August, that's when the, the process goes to the state, and they, they decide whether or not they're going to award 100% funding, or if they're going to award 80% funding. So the state will say, we're going to give you 80% funding for the bridge. Or there's some instances where it could be 100% funding. We probably won't know until October what this is going to be, because August is when they figure out if they're going, this is what I would, when I talk to the bridge people, because there's a whole separate division just for bridges, apparently. But they, they, they figure it out, what's going to happen around August. You have to, everything submitted by August. And then October is when they say, we're going to give 100% or you're going to pay 80%. That's from what I understood when I talked to them like a year ago.
My concern is this. If you just look at what Public Works has in this, and this isn't your problem, I get it, but every single project, West Side Collector, Whitehaven, Ferry, Riverside, Drive, Kensington Woods, every single one of those projects has an explanation of what the work is. Baron Creek is nothing. It says, it was located on top of this dam, and the additional cost to complete this project has caused the project to be postponed on multiple occasions. It doesn't even tell you what they're, doesn't tell you whether it studies, it doesn't say anything.
I can't answer the question.
Says nothing. It's nothing but a carrot that was thrown out, in my opinion.
Can we, can we remove it until a plan is formed, either by the state or the county? I, I'm wondering why the state's even involved in the county road, but I guess that's a whole different discussion.
So.
But, but I don't, I don't even know why we should have it in there, because there's no explanation.
The last time it was removed, the last time it was removed, the state couldn't do anything about it. And, and that's why it's back in there this time, because a lot of people in your district want that bridge. And I am very frustrated, because everyone that I know, minus Mr. Atkins, I understand his point, but literally everyone that I know in that area wants the, the bridge. Pardon me.
Why isn't there a five-year total with a complete comprehensive? Excellent, don't interrupt, please. Don't interrupt me, please.
It was taken out last year.
I'm asking you, don't interrupt, okay? You don't have a plan in here for five years. If there's a plan, if it's a significant plan, and you're just not giving lip service, why do you have 1.75 in a plan where there is no plan?
I understand your frustration on that. But I can say, when you, when we took it out last year, because the years prior, it had been sat on, and we all know that. But when we took it out last year, and everyone agreed to it, except for me, it prevented us to even go further with it. Now, I don't know why the 1.75 is in there. I, you know, I don't, I don't know if it really matters, what the number is, but I can say, if you remove that, you're just going to cause more problems down the road, unless that is the goal.
When you say it calls, when you say.
It, it prevent, it took.
What did it prevent?
Well, when we took it off the priority letter last year, right? The state said, well, it's not a priority. We're not going to look into it anymore. That's what happened.
Well, I, I don't think that.
That is what happened. I was on the phone.
We've had the same priority letter for about eight years, and nothing to really change in any of the, the list on the priority letter.
I believe council did take Baron Creek off of the priority.
I get it, but everything on the priority letter hasn't been addressed. Our number one object on the priority letter hasn't been, had, has been addressed in.
I know. Not a good idea to take that off.
Good, Joe.
About the Baron Creek.
The county.
And I, first of all, why is the state involved in it? Because it's on a county road. And the other question is, how much money has been actually spent? Not, not dedicated, but actually spent so far on, you know, going down there, scraping the road, you know, checking, doing tests, having, how much is the county?
I, I have, I have sent that number, I do not have that number with me.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayers' dollars.
Well, I, I'd like to know the exact, you know, figure. I can't imagine on my side, the county road getting closed. I don't like the idea of closing roads. We had, I've been through that twice. Once with Shabox Road, through the State Forest, and we fought that and kept it open. And the other with the airport, the southern end of the airport, where they all sat when they closed it anyway. But is it worth to keep it open? And how much have we spent to keep it open? And how much are we going to spend to get it open? Is it worth it? I don't, I don't know.
I don't have a problem, and I, Mr. Atkins knows this, I don't have a problem putting Baron Creek Road back together again.
Yeah.
I would just like to know what the plan is to do it. This is a CIP. This is how you plan these things. But there is no plan. It's just a 1.2, 1.75 placeholder with no description, no significance whatsoever. And I don't think the state's going to say, oh, well, you have 1.75 in your 2007, we're going to look into here, see, see if we can't help you with your road. I, I don't see where it's bringing any attention to anything.
I just want to clarify, the Baron Creek Road, I believe, is in the priority letter.
It's in the priority, it is in the priority letter, I believe, because Mardella put it in their section of the priority letter.
Right.
If I remember correctly, it got removed from the Wacomico County section. And Mardella asked for it to be put in their section, if I remember correctly.
Not in the limits of Mardella, though.
I, I, I do not believe, if I, if I remember sitting, if I remember correctly, council took it off the letter, and Mardella asked for it to be put in their section, even though it's not in the town limits of Mardella, they got, they asked for it to be put in their section. I don't know the ins and outs of that priority letter. I'm just have, based on memory, that is the memory I have from the fall.
Yeah, you're 100% correct.
President Cannon's point, it really should have some sort of description as to what exactly we're looking at, or what we're trying to do here. But I want to, of course, just say, and I've said it many times over, this road should not exist. Other than maybe Mr. Atkins, I've driven on this road way more than any, anyone else around. My brother still lives on the other side of the, of the space. There's no desire for it. Every time, we always had that road, it always was in disrepair. Not only did we fix it once, we fixed it twice, and it fell apart. There's no way that that whole space is, should have a road. So anyway, I think it's just a waste of money, and I don't think we're in a time where we should be wasting money. But then again, I don't live out there anymore, so I'm not going to, I'll let that up to the other folks.
All I can say is, at this, at this point in time, the CIP is in the council's hands. The council can, I brought forward the changes that don't coincide with 26. If council wants to make a change in an out year, you have that prerogative. And I can add it to the list of what I provide you as your amendments to provide on the floor.
What was that now, from years ago, when all this? Baron Creek started with all the issues they were having with fish ladders, and the pond was going to disappear, which it did. Now it's just a stream through it.
I don't.
And our, or whoever Wildlife Department did, didn't, you couldn't fix it unless you fixed it a certain way, so the fish could get back up there.
I believe, and this is where, I believe the fish ladder is off the table now, but I don't know why. If, having, you know, tangentially been involved in conversations, I believe that part is off the table, and that has changed the cost structure of this. But again.
I think we've lost our way as far as the CIP being a substantive document as to any sense of reality on, across the board. It has a great purpose for many of the projects, such as what we're doing in Recreation and Parks and the Civic Center, but things like this, I think, destroy the credibility of a CIP at all. I mean, yeah, you say it's the council's decision, okay, well, we'll, we'll say 425,000 for the next four years, for 2007 through 2030. That would be almost the equivalent of this. How is that any different than saying we're going to do 1.75 in 2027? Because we know it's not a reality. It's, it's not a realist, it is not a reality. State of Maryland isn't looking around and go, oh, they've got 2,000. State of Maryland reads this, they go, you have 1.75 million for Baron Creek Road? What's it for? It doesn't even tell them.
2018, they estimated the rebuilding cost was 6 to 8 million dollars. What do you, what do you think it's going to be now?
A lot worse, because you also have a whole, now you have species issues, now you have, you know, there's, the, the whole area has changed, the topography of the space has changed. It's, and, and by the way, it was so bad then, there would, there would be giant potholes that would open for years when I would drive over it. And then they'd have to fix it, and then the pothos will begin, you know.
My concern about it, my concern about approving it too, is I think it sends mixed messages too. Even though I don't think it's a real number, we're still doing surveys, and we're still doing tests out there. And yet, anything we do is probably eight, 10 years, I mean, eight years to six years in the making to actually come up with something substantial. Why are we spending money and hiring people to come down and do tests on this property now, when anything and everything they do has nothing to do with, with the future, you know, engineering? And that's what I don't want to do. I don't want to send a signal, say, oh, keep spending that prior 835,000 that we approved, keep spending that, because you are wasting money.
If the state rebuilds the road with the financial state that the state is in, they might turn it into a toll road.
Yeah, there you go.
Right? Well, Pam only wants to know the numbers.
I, I'm just asking if you want me to prepare a line item adjusting Baron Creek for 27? Yes or no?
My opinion is, we have a year to worry about that, honestly.
Okay. So just leave it in, and, because again, it does not fund anything at this point, point in time.
Yeah, you know, I got you. We got a year to worry about it. I just don't want to spend any more money, but that's not your issue. That's something that they need.
We just don't want to come back next year and say, oh, well, you funded it.
I, I have, again, I have stated to you, Joe, I don't believe I have ever stated that if, if it's.
But other people have.
Again, I've been in this role now almost five years, so we've got to kind of go with the history that I've got. And the history that I've got is, is I won't, if you don't fund it, I don't say, well, it was in the CIP.
I have a question about Hobbs Road drainage pipe, and you probably don't know about this, this is kind of down the road from me. I recall them putting in new drainage pipes there a few years ago. Can we get a history on what's been spent there?
I would have to find out where exactly on Hobbs Road, which drainage pipe they're talking about. I know there's one there past Salisbury School, after you make the turn.
Right, Mill.
Um, but.
But Bridges House are, is.
Yeah. I, I don't know if that's it. I know they did some road work. I'm not sure they actually did anything associated with the drainage pipe.
They did one time, because I was there when they were digging it up, because it got stocked up with all kinds of debris.
So.
But I'm, I'm just looking at the 100,000 to engineering. And don't we have an engineer on staff?
Sure. I think these are questions, honestly, Laura, I think we should ask these questions of Public Works and ask them at the same time with the letter that all of those says, can you please explain what we are currently doing, what we're spending with Baron Creek, and what the 1.75 is supposed to be doing in 2027? No reflection on what we're going to be doing in the next two months, but let's just get some answers to some of these questions.
So on the Hobbs Road, I've been dri, I have to drop my daughter off at school there, and that's the road that I take. And it has been open since 2018. So, I mean, at, it, the drainage pipe, they have not closed it long enough. They might have closed it for a day or so, but they have not dug down to that drainage pipe all the way down in the seven years since 2018 that I've been driving that road.
At one point, it was, Mr. Bridge called me, he's passed away since, but, and his, you know, there's that big house up on the hill? Not, not on the downside of the stream, but the upside. Water was about to go into his basement, and he came down there and they dug it, dug it, got, got it opened up, it got stocked up with old trees and stuff. But then I thought they'd come along and put new tiles in. And I just, I'm looking at this 100,000 for engineering while we've got an engineer staff, and it's a drainage pipe that goes under a road. Do we have to? Got an engineer hired, why are we spending 100,000? I mean, it might need a new pipe, I don't know. So that's a question.
Add to the list, if we could add to the list, Laura, I would like to know, on sanitary districts, you know, we're putting 850,000 to fiscal 26, and then 250 every year from there on out, if you just get a better idea of exactly what those funds are for.
That, I have one more question. That's okay. The, did you talk about the 12 Oaks and Willards?
The what?
Is it, is it, is it 12 Oaks Bridge and Willards?
No, not 12 Oaks.
What's that?
Three Bridges Road.
Is it Three Bridges Road?
It's back on 19 or 20.
19?
Twelve, yeah, 12 Oaks, yeah, 12 Oaks drainage pipe.
Is that?
And then there's Popper Neck.
12 Oaks is in 2028.
Is that the bridge in Willards, is the one I'm talking about? You know, the one by the Iron Horse Cafe?
That's, that's Popper Neck, I think.
12 Oaks, 12 Oaks, I believe, is out 50 across from, or actually, I believe, on Crooked Oak, if I'm remembering correctly where 12 Oaks is.
Okay, that's not the one.
Popper Neck's the one you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's for 26.
That, that's in 26 for 200.
That's a pretty.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah.
So that's, that's listed in here as Pago for 200,000.
I don't know if I need to talk, who do I need to talk to, but apparently, there's some big holes in, on the road before you get to the bridge. And I don't know if I should.
I've, I've mentioned it before, it's not going to take you.
Okay. I don't know if I need to maybe talk to Scott about that or not. Huh?
If you got a connection, I need to.
I'll call somebody and see what happens.
Question on the CIP, Pam. Question on the, uh, CIP, Pam.
Mr. President, I actually do have a question. Um, so to make the amendments, I mean, I don't have a problem with council making the amendments, um, to remove or reduce or even maybe change the funding source, um, but for the projects that we're adding, council, according to the charter, doesn't have the authority to add.
So everything that is listed on this sheet has been approved by administration.
Okay. Should we get something from them, though? Can, we see we can get a memo asking for it to be added? Um, that, that's my only concern. We don't have anything in writing.
So, so again, we submitted a, but, so everything in the top section was submitted in a budget that was submitted by the executive. So I would take that as ta, approval that they want these things. Because you, we submitted a budget with, I'm just giving you the listing of things that have changed since we submitted the CIP. Everything listed in the top section before it says council proposed change is in the proposed budget. So the executive approved the submission of the proposed budget, which means she's approved the concept of each one of these.
I would feel more comfortable, though, if we had an addendum, that we amended the CIP with an addendum from the executive office saying that it has been authorized to be transferred from Pago to bond and from Pago to bond. Because I think that's relevant.
I will ask the question again.
It's nothing but, it's nothing but, you, you wrote it here.
I understand.
We're just asking for something that's, that's, um, separate from this, that can be just put into the CIP with it. Would you think that would, um, address that concern? Because the public's not going to know it if they don't see it.
That's more of a legal question.
Well, the public, I mean, if the public wants to pull this up and say, "Hey, what's going on here? Then, I didn't know it was bonded, I didn't know it was Pago." That tells them that a change was made and it was authorized.
Well, I mean, the proposal that I, the, the changes that I would write up for you would blatantly state, "We're moving this from Pago," like this. Removing it from Pago to bond. Council, your-
Yes, yeah, you're right. Okay.
Your resolution would say, your amendment would say, "We are recommending moving emergencies, Pittsfield Tower rebuild from Pago to bond," because the executive submitted it as Pago. She's now asking for it to go to bond.
And on that topic, we're also going to move, um, the Civic Center elevator from Pago to bond.
Yes.
And Reckon Parks Mason Dixon from Pago to bond.
So everything in the top section, yes, is, those were changes from the CIP to what is submitted in the capital budget. The only three things that are different from this, which is what's in the capital budget, are the three at the bottom, which is the council proposed change of removing the Health Department and then asking, so anything in this top section has already been approved by the executive, because the executive submitted a budget. The bottom three are ones, if you want her to sign a statement that she wants to move the Pittsfield Tower rebuild, because that's not what she submitted, fine. But those, everything above council proposed changes has already been submitted by the executive in the executive's budget.
There's no charter violation in the executive changing the capital improvement program after it's been submitted?
I mean, it, we change the cap, we change the capital improvement program every year because we have more information from when we submit this in December to when we're actually doing the budget in April.
Uh, so do we know why she's looking to take, um, some of these projects from Pago to bond?
Well, we originally were going to bond, um, some of the funds for, uh, the, um-
Health Department.
No. Well, that is part of it. But we orig, so the, the first section as to why she moved it from CIP to submission was with the change in the Board of Education, it freed up some ability to do some bonding and also then left us the ability to maintain our fund balance with what we have for future, because we may need fund balance next spring to do cash flow or next summer early to do cash flow for the Board of Education. So we made the decision that, we talked with the departments and said, "Hey, the timing of bond funding is November 1st." Basically, you have availability of those funds. And so every project that we are moving from Pago to bond has been discussed with departments. I've discussed it with Steve, I've discussed it with Seth, I've discussed it with Lorenzo, that these, and November is a timeframe that they can work with, um, having the cash.
So that the public and anybody else will know two years from now what happened in 2026 fiscal year budget or CIP. Will the message also be changed to reflect what was actually done in fiscal year 2026 and in the, in this current CIP?
So-
It is no, what is in the message now, it's nothing like what is really going to be happening.
So Pam Olin views the CIP as a planning document. And so Pam Olin has been trying to say that this is a planning document, plans change. The ruling document is your capital budget, because that's the only thing that offer, authorizes your spending.
She's saying that the, the message strictly, very much so conflicts and contradicts the actual CIP.
We have, we have not historically changed the message on either the budget and/or the CIP. We will post and adopt a changed CIP where I will change the spreadsheets upfront with any of these changes. If council adopts these changes, I will make a change because we do post an adopted CIP. And we do post an adopted budget. The message was from that, was that date.
I'm just saying that when someone goes back and looks at this, we're trying to, we're trying to clean house. We're trying to keep everything clean and orderly. And for someone to go back two years from now and go, "What the heck were they doing? I mean, this doesn't even, this says we're $10 million in, in bonding, and the CIP's $2 million in bonding. What were they doing?"
But they will see that the letter was dated December 17th and you adopted the CIP on June 3rd.
Well, change the date.
I don't change the date on the letter. The letter is what it is.
Oh, God. I don't know why it's so difficult just to try to make things simple.
Because do you understand how much time-
A letter, a cover letter.
No. It is time.
It's a cover letter. I'm talking about the message, the cover letter. It's a page and a half.
It's a page and a half where I have to go through and make sure everything then ties back out again.
But it completely contradicts what we have now. Completely contradicts. If there's another county that wants to see what Wacomico County-
We could take the letter off. I, we can actually take the letter off in the adopted one, because the letter doesn't mean anything anymore.
That's the easy way to do it. If another county's reading our CIP, they're going to go, "Who the hell is Wacomico County? What the heck, what is all this mess?"
We can take the letter off.
I just requested it. That's all I'm requesting, that the message needs to be, the message needs to coincide with the CIP. I consider them all one and the same. I know-
And that's where your finance director disagrees.
And I think probably a lot of other people across the state of Maryland would wonder what was going on.
But what, let's get a letter asking for the projects to be added.
The bottom two. The bottom two being shifted from Pago to bond.
I didn't like that much, did you?
No, I'm talking about the, the changes on the top part.
I will give, I, I don't see, again, those all are in the budget. So those have all been approved. I, the bottom two have not been approved, because those aren't in the budget. The budget was a submission to council that this is what the executive wanted to do. That's what all of these top things are doing, is aligning the CIP with that budget. So she has given you the formal letter by submitting it on the third Tuesday in April.